Good evening and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting this July 23rd, 2024. I'm pleased today that providing our invocation will be Dr. David Campbell, who is the Senior Pastor of Dewest Methodist Church. He will be followed by the pledge. If Officer Amber Freeman is not here, a pledge will be brought by Officer Pritchard. But before we go into our invocation and pledge, I do have some unfortunate news for many of you who have frequent in this building, that it was just brought to my attention that Officer Ron Underwood has passed away. One of the friendliest faces you'll see when you walk into this building. So before we have our invocation and pledge, I would like for us to have a moment of silence.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let us pray.
Excuse me, sir, I'm gonna have everyone stand. If you'd be willing, please stand.
Thank you, ma'am. Let us pray. Gracious God, we come into this place in this solemn moment. Lord, we are grateful for this community in which we are honored to live. Lord, we thank you for all of the public servants in our county. Father, for the one Officer Underwood that has passed away, we thank you for his service. We thank you for the impact he made on this area, this community. Father, we pray now for his family. We pray that you will send your spirit of comfort, peace, assurance, and hope. Let them know, dear Lord, that they have the prayers and they have the support of all in Cobb County. Father, this evening, we pray for our Board of Commissioners. We thank you for those, for them, and for their willingness to serve. We pray this evening that you will give them wisdom, guidance, discernment, not to make decisions that are easy, but decisions that are best. We pray, Lord, for all the conversation. If we cannot all be in agreement, we pray for respectful disagreement. We pray for conversation and dialogue that edifies one another and this community. Be with us tonight, dear God. We ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Campbell. Appreciate you being here. Our meeting is now called to order. At the top of this meeting, we have two presentations, which will be brought by Economic Development, and the first one will be brought jointly with our District Two Commissioner. If you're here as a part of that check presentation of Sharp Media, please join them up front.
Wonderful. Absolutely congratulations as well. So on May 14th, 2024, the Board of Commissioners approved a $10,000 entrepreneurship and innovation grant for Sharp Media LLC in District Two. Sharp Media, this business has been in operation since January of 2023. An innovative company, Sharp Media was created to launch and manage video ad campaigns for local service-based companies. Morgan Drake has over 10 years of experience in digital video streaming and emerging media. Specializing in this field, he recognized the need for business owners to alleviate the time-consuming and complicated task of video marketing. Based on the client's business and optimized for their audience, he and his team use AI to automate video content for ad campaigns. They are currently operating out of a coworking space, but were recently selected to join the Hatch Bridge Incubator program at KSU and will be moving their operations to that location. So absolutely, congratulations. We are so excited to see these grants back in place with the Development Authority in partnership with the Economic Development Team and certainly a great way to keep seeding our companies. So I will hand the mic over to whoever wants to take it next. Go for it.
Well, I couldn't have said it any better myself. Really, the only thing left to say is thank you. Along with being a dreamer and entrepreneur, I'm also a husband and a father, and I've heard many times it takes a village. I couldn't, this same applies. This is a new baby in a different sense, but just thank you so much. I can't say it enough.
Again, on behalf of the Economic Development Department, we are just so grateful to our partnership with the Development Authority of Cobb County for funding this grant and for giving us the opportunity to support small businesses throughout Cobb County. And so that includes all of our cities. And so you are a Cobb County resident, and we are so proud to have your business here in the county. So congratulations and wish you all the best.
Thank you so much.
All right. Sabrina, you could stay with us up front, and you'll now be joined by our District One Commissioner. And those who are with Suites LLC, please join them up front.
It is with great honor that we present this check to Suites LLC, Deisha and Mark Mayfield. They actually have a ribbon cutting scheduled on July 16th of 2024, and their location is at 999 Whitlock Avenue, Suite 4 in Marietta, Georgia. So they are a modern bakery and cafe located near the Marietta Square. This community multipurpose bakery is a relaxed and cozy eat-in cafe with a sophisticated twist for people looking for a unique experience. Sweet Living Bakery is a community-driven bakery offering both private and community seating for individuals, families, and friends. Congratulations.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm a, excuse me, I'm a veteran as well. And so when I was, I retired last year. When my wife wanted to start this venture, I thought to her, I said, okay, you've supported me and you've, you know, through deployments and missions, and it was a great opportunity to see this come together. So we're excited just to be able to be here in a community, to have an impact. Our goal is to be effective, to be transparent, and to be vocal, to assist with being an advocate of change in our community. And our bakery is just kind of an extension of that. So we're excited, we are thankful, and we appreciate the opportunity to serve our community.
So we're happy again to support this business, especially another veteran-owned business. So thank you so much for your service and for your commitment to Cobb County.
Thank you, and that concludes our presentations for this evening. Next, we'll hear from our CFO with respect to our public hearings, and our first one will be with respect to our millage.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager. This is our third and final public hearing on the 2024 proposed millage rate. Before we ask the Board to open the public hearing, we have a brief presentation on the millage that I'd like to walk through. Again, just laying out our schedule. We did the advertisement in the MBJ on June 27th. Our first public hearing was on July 9th in our morning meeting. Our second public hearing was on July 16th for a special call meeting at 6:30. And our third and final public hearing is tonight at 7:00. Following the public hearing, we would ask the Board to consider adoption of the 2024 proposed millage rate. And again, as we walk through these, the millage rates are listed there for what we adopted in 2023 as well as what's being proposed for 2024. You can see the General Fund, the FIRE Fund, the Cumberland Special Service District Two Fund, and the Six Flags Special Service Districts. The millage rates are being proposed to be adopted at the same rate that they were the prior year. And that is able to be accomplished through the net digest growth that we experienced over the last couple of years. So I'll just draw your attention to the chart at the bottom. All right. And then this is a more detailed breakdown of the digest as we compare. And one of the items that we want to call to your attention is at the very bottom, we have the exemption of the M&amp;O, and you'll see that is a negative number. So in 2023, that was 14, you'll see it, 14.9. It has increased to 17. And what we, that, why that's important is that is related to the homestead exemptions. So, and I do want to go over that a little bit. So the homestead exemption is a benefit to Cobb County taxpayers who, this applies to their primary residents and their primary residents only. This does not apply to rental properties or commercial properties or anything like that, but this is a primary benefit to their primary residents. And to give you an idea of scale and scope of that, homestead exemption, if that was not there, the general fund taxes would be $17 million higher. So that is again, a tremendous benefit. That is what is not being paid in on the primary homestead exemption. And how that works is when you file your homestead exemption, when you purchase your house, it locks in that value. So as your house is reassessed and that value raises, your general fund taxes do not increase. Again, that only applies to your primary residents. And one of the other things that we want to call to your attention is this has some pretty strong growth, but in comparison, one of the things we want to draw out is a comparison to 2022's growth, which had a net increase of 8.04% and 2023's growth, which had a net increase of 10.49%. 2024's net increase was 6.18. So we are seeing this come back down. 2022 and 2023 had tremendous growth years. Prior to that, we were growing on an average around between 4% and 5% for the three previous years prior to 2023. Now, we are seeing that slow down. We are seeing some of the development and other revenues tied to development and refinancing slow as well. But we still are seeing strong growth that will continue to fund the requests that we'll be presenting later. Okay, so I do apologize for the people in the back. I want to make sure, and I will try to spend a good bit of time on this slide so we can walk through this. So what we try to do is always pick out a property within Cobb County that was reassessed and kind of walk through their, their tax bill. So for example, the property that we're speaking of had a fair market value of $480,760 in 2023. That property has been reassessed, and their new fair market value is $646,010. So significant increase from 2023 to 2024. So significant increase from 2023 to 2024. Now, the breakdown that we want to share with you is you'll notice that general fund box at the very bottom, even though the reassessment is significantly higher because of the floating homestead, there is no increase in the general fund tax component. However, the FIRE Fund does not have that, does not have a homestead float, so there would be a $197.64 increase. And then the school board, assuming this person does pay school taxes, would have a $1,236.07 increase. So you can see kind of the breakdown of that, and again, just trying to show the value of the homestead exemption and the breakdown of the property taxes as we walk through that. Now, one of the questions that we asked, has been asked, is kind of what does that translate into regarding the homestead and then also the rollback rate? And so we're going to share a few examples there. So for example, if the county were to go to the rollback rate of the general fund, again, the general fund taxes did not increase, so that line that we have highlighted in yellow would actually go down. If the county were to go to the rollback rate, that would be a $34.67 savings for the year. That is $2.89 per month to go to the rollback rate. And I know we discussed in a previous meeting a reduction to the FIRE Fund. That is not moving forward. As you can see in the previous slide, we are leaving the FIRE Fund as flat as presented, but the discussion was a .02 reduction to the FIRE Fund. So I want to share what that would look like for this property. A .02 reduction in the general fund millage would result in a 99 cent decrease for the year. That is nine cents per month. That's basically what that equates to. So it is very, very minimum decrease as we walk through that, but one of the things we wanted to be transparent and comparable is what if this or a similar property did not have a homestead? What would that look like? So for example, if a property was, had a fair market value of $450,000 with no homestead exemption, that could be a commercial property, residential, rental property, whatever that may be, if the county were to go to the rollback rate, that would save the taxpayer $118.83 per year. That is $9.90 per month. A .2 reduction on that same property would save the property owner $3.40 per year. That is 28 cents per month. So just to kind of give you an idea of how we walk through this, but this specific example you'll see highlighted at the bottom, because of the floating homestead exemption, this taxpayer saves $925.70 in their 2024 taxes based on the reassessed value. So again, the county has had a focus on homeownership in Cobb County, and you can see that with its direct benefit. Is there, I covered a lot on this slide, so I do want to pause here and see if the board has any questions on this slide before I move on.
His question was directed to the board, not to the audience, and would just ask that there not be communication back and forth with our presenters this evening, and we'll do our best not to have any interruptions for any of you who are speaking during our hearing this evening. Thank you. You can go ahead, Bill.
Okay. Sorry, I did, I did forget to mention one other point before we take questions. I'm sorry, Commissioner. I, I want to make sure I cover all my notes here. So one of the items that has been discussed is how the tax assessor works and how, how they determine the value. So Georgia law requires the tax assessor's office to value properties at fair market value. I know that has been a conversation of, well, how do you always get the millage rate to come out to the requests in the budget? I know those are tied, so we're going to loosely explore that just real quickly. Well, simply is if the board decides to leave the millage rate flat, not all the requests are funded. That's how that works out. It is simply based on the limitations in which we set the millage rate, requests do not get funded. So we kind of work through that process, but I did want to share that because it is Georgia law requirement that the tax assessor assessed properties at fair market value. Okay. So I believe I've covered all my notes, but I do want to turn it over to the board if you have any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Garmble, I believe you had a question? Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Shap.
Just two things. With respect to the fair market value, can you explain who determines what that value is?
Sure. I am not the tax assessor, but I will do my best to walk through that. So they value like properties, similar properties to the property that they're, well, they, they look at your subdivision and look at recent home sales, and that is driven whether they need to reassess. So up or down? So one of the things we saw during the recession of '08, '09, we saw values declining. So that was part of the reassessment to bring values down. And the same thing as properties sell at a higher value, they do have to be reassessed to match that fair market value. Now, they do look at comparable properties, and that is one of the keys, and I'm hoping I'm doing Stephen White justice here. So for example, if you have your four-bedroom, two-bath house, and you have a basement, finished basement, and maybe somebody does not, that may be an argument for non-comparable. So he does walk through that. We've had some pretty good conversations. He does a great video, which I think Ross Cabot has posted online, walking through the assessments, and also some of the challenges they face. One of the items that he did, does, is a really good graph showing the housing, housing supply, and that also drives the value. So coming out of the pandemic, we had an all-time low housing supply, demand was up, houses were selling very quickly. That has shifted a little bit, but it still hasn't significantly improved, so you're still seeing housing prices continue to climb as resales happen. So that is how he addresses it, and again, I hope I'm doing Stephen White justice here. So, but if I didn't answer your question, I will do my best to clarify any points you would like further explained.
No, you did. I just wanted to just provide an explanation because, you know, we receive emails, or at least I receive emails, and people seem to believe that it's the Board of Commissioners that's setting the value and the assessment value for the property. So I just wanted you to shed some light on that.
No, and that, that is a perfect question because actually Stephen White comes out in early March, provides us a preliminary digest, or what he projects the digest to be up or down. He shares that with all the municipalities, school board, you name it, everybody involved in that gets a preliminary update. They continue to work through the digest as, as well as the appeal process. So that final digest is what is in front of us today for consideration, and that final digest is the basis on that millage decision. So that is always one of the key critical steps. Stephen is not involved in the budget process. He does not know what the requests are. He is not part of that process whatsoever. He is simply assigning a value to the properties within Cobb County. It is the board's decision to design a millage rate which would generate that revenue. It is simply a multiplier. Whatever Stephen's number is, based on the tax assessor's office, the millage is a multiplier to get that revenue number. So again, he is not involved in the budget process, but it is a critical component for us to consider as we begin making forecasts.
Okay.
And my other question, you gave a couple of examples regarding the rollback and the savings per month, or actually per year and broken down by month. So in the example of $450,000, just as a refresher, a rollback would be $118 per year or $9 a month. And let's say we moved in that direction, what would that mean in terms of revenue loss for the county if you have a dollar amount, and what would that mean to, for our obligated expenses?
Sure. So that is a great question. So one of the misconceptions about the rollback rate is it's considered revenue neutral. It is in fact not revenue neutral. So one of the items that we discussed is the rollback rate would actually generate the county $9 million less in revenue than it collected in 2023. And the reason that is done that way is every home that is, has an exemption that does not have a tax increase would receive a significant tax decrease, generating a $9 million loss in revenue. So it's not a flat neutral revenue number. So the rollback rate is simply based on the new assessed values and not the existing homestead exemption property. So that is kind of carved out. So it is a little bit of a confusion that people assume the rollback rate is revenue neutral. So when we advertise, we have to calculate the rollback rate, working with Stephen White's office to say this is what it is, and then we advertise a 9% increase. If we were to truly go to that, you would lose, you would have $9 million less in revenue than you did in 2023. So it is a $32 million change from the rollback rate to what is being proposed, or sorry, the rollback rate to what is being proposed, but actual revenue from 2023 to projected revenue for 2024, it's $22 million and change. So it is a $9 million difference between those two numbers. Now, that's a little confusing, so I want to make sure I, everybody can process that. At the end of the day, it is a $9 million reduction in revenue compared to what we actually collected in 2023.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions before Bill proceeds?
Okay. So Chairwoman, if there's no further questions, I ask you open the first public hearing on the 2024 millage rate.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. We'll take an unlimited number of speakers. Each speaker can speak for up to three minutes on this matter and on this matter only. Just ask if any of, you are new, to be mindful that before you begin your comments, that you should state your name. We'll go ahead and take our first speaker at this time.
Good evening, Cobb County Board of Commissioners. My name is Kathy Slough. I'm a 20-year homeowner, city of Marietta, Cobb County, Georgia. We oppose your votes for a tax increase. Georgia law requires you to set the millage rate to the bull rack rate where there is no tax increase. You hold this tax increase hearing because Georgia law requires you to have this hearing when you vote to raise taxes. The cost value of our homes or the number of homes does not force you to vote for a tax increase. The only reason we will have a tax increase is your votes to raise taxes. So please own your vote, do not hide from it. You try to justify the tax increase by signing tax increase dollars to public safety, but that's a shell game to hide the fact that you did not cut anything else in the budget. Our Chair Cupid says it is difficult for all of us. It's difficult for my family. It's ridiculous when I think about how much we are paying. So vote no. What is ridiculous for you is to vote for the tax increase. Our Chair Cupid also says hiring consultants saves costs to hiring more employees as consultant fees are finite and avoid ongoing expenses. We don't need consultants to tell us to draft higher taxes like the rain tax and 1% sales tax, rewriting our zoning codes and many other things, while we, the people, your constituents, are struggling to pay mortgages, rent, and afford essential needs. I'm here for myself. I'm here for my 95-year young neighbor that cannot be here, that walks with a walker, and I'm here for my other neighbor that has to live with a few people while she's paying $2,000 a month in rent. It's going to go up to $2,200 because her landlord raised it, and guess what she makes? She's a server. She makes $2.13 an hour. How do you expect her, someone 95, and myself to live? In summary, we, the people, your constituents, oppose you voting for a tax increase. Thank you for hearing me and listening to me. Thank you for your time.
My name is Betty Buran. I've been a resident of Cobb County for over 50 years, and I'd like to identify the members of the commission who are in the majority. There are lots of things I'd rather be doing tonight than being here, but you remind me of teenagers who get into trouble the minute they're beyond adult supervision. To refresh everyone's memory over the last few years, you decided to spend $5 million of Cobb County taxpayer money on a consulting firm to tell you how to do your jobs. Actually, I think the object of that decision was to put the onus on Deloitte in case your recommendations don't work out for you. You imagined yourselves above the Georgia legislature by decreeing home rule in order to keep your rubber stamp member on the commission. You even tried to take away our simple choice of garbage collection, for goodness sake. Then, after public outrage, you tabled until August the decision to establish the rainwater tax, then tabled it again indefinitely. My guess is you'll bring it up for a vote again when we're all distracted, probably on something like an election. Now, you want a millage rate increase, i.e. an increase in property taxes. Next, it's a budget increase. After that, it'll be a transfer, oh, excuse me, it's a mobility tax. Stop it, please. Do like the rest of us, after your federal government compatriots have spent us into oblivion. You need to cut back on your spending. You need to live within your means. Tighten your belt. Thank you.
My name is Robert Maynor. I'm a Cobb County resident. Just as a fact, my assessment between '22 and '24 went up 44%, which I appealed, it was rejected, but that is a ridiculous increase, and you have to understand that these assessments were made when we had 3% mortgages and we have 7% mortgages now. So those values no longer really show. If you look at the late sales, you can see that the prices are down. You're asking basically for a $43 million tax increase during a time when families are already suffering from the higher effect of inflation caused by, guess what, government overspending. The tax increases, increase is bad enough for us as homeowners, but it will primarily affect lower-income and young people who are renters and can't take advantage of the homestead exemption. They will be hit the hardest by rent increases. You've created a budget in addition that is so opaque that no one except your own staff can understand it. It's virtually impossible to get a real understanding of where the money actually goes. Where have you hidden the cost of the MSFLOS promotion, which most people, with the exception of a few of you on the board, don't want? Somewhere north of $1 million? We have no idea. You can't figure it out by looking at the budget. It's also virtually impossible to pry out the information of how much you all have spent on consultants. This alone could count for much of the increase looked for at the budget documents it's, you produce. It's just impossible to tell. Now, there's conflicting information between what your budget director and what the East Cobb newspaper said, because they actually said that the Cobb School Board is considering a tax in, or decrease. So apparently you all live in a different world than the school board does. Your administrative costs in the 20, in this new budget are $111 million. That's a 20% increase in one year. The reason I'm speaking out is so that those folks most affected by this overspending and overtaxing will hopefully get the picture and deal with the big spenders on this board in November, because I know you won't actually be moved by this public input. Thank you for your time.
My name's Dave McFarland. You know me as the original local control guy. I'd like to talk about the tax, the tax rate in the context of recent events, Cobb history, and how it affects the future. In recent events, we know, I talked to you a little bit about the rail, the California rail, high-speed rail that was promised by Obama from LA to San Francisco. It's 14 years behind schedule and $5 billion, and not one single track has gone. How about the EV charging stations? Remember that? 7.5 billions. Eight have been built. Five of them actually work. San Francisco toilet, $7 million for that. That was 14 months, took 14 months to put together. Build Back Better, you remember that? The campaign pledge? Nothing's built, and it's now a late-night comedy joke. You don't hear anything about it, do you? Afghan betrayal, $55 billion of high-tech equipment given to our enemies, and you don't think those are in Chinese hands or the Taliban? How many American servicemen are going to lose their lives because of that failure? And oh, by the way, that emboldened Putin, and guess what? He invaded Ukraine. What devastation? What horrible suffering that was caused by that? Recently, the Trump assassination attempt, and you see Chedle, and she's, she's interviewed by, by, by both Democrats and Republicans, and she, she is the face of the deep state, and it's emboldened, and it's growing, and it's the deep state, and it's the enemy. Epic historic failure. You think that at least our president should be, and I've talked many times about the failed state. failed cities and states. Name one single Democrat, state, county, any project, any project, name one, that hasn't ended up in a total disaster. One. Well, we should know this. Of us, any people who should know that, we here in Cobb, because of the devastation and the rivers of blood, the mountains of corpses that are left behind from our history. What? The Trail of Tears, where Jackson came in, stole Cherokee land, and then guess where he gave it to? The plantation, his cronies, who instituted plantation slavery and unspeakable human suffering. The Civil War, 600,000 men, more than all of our wars combined, and 3,000 here in Cobb. We should know about that. If anybody knows about it, we should know the devastation that can occur. The South was destroyed because it had to be in order to get rid of the cult of plantation slavery. Excuse me, sir.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Steve Papa George, and I'm a longtime Cobb resident. Came in '83. Have owned a home since '98. And I'm here tonight from a number of years of frustration in seeing my annual tax assessment. Throughout the course of it, there's been two years that we've talked about where I didn't see an increase. But every other year, at a minimum, it was double digits. And it's common to see my tax increases 25%, 20%. You guys have me conditioned so that if I open up an annual tax assessment and it's at 10% or under, I think it's been a good year. And I work in private industry. I understand the pressures and the wages needed by our county service members. But in any given year, I might see a 2% increase for cost of living in my wages, in my salary. That will get eaten up purely by increase in my health plan. And then you've got to look at just general inflation. Anything that you do that's above the general rate of inflation or the cost of living for Medicare, for the Social Security recipients, for the pension recipients that are here, is unsustainable for those individuals. And when I'm dealing with what feels like 10% being a good year, okay, if my tax bill is 10% this year and 10% the next year, so on and so forth, if I'm paying $4,000 this year, in seven years roughly, I'm going to be paying 8. Seven more, 16. At that point in time, the tax amount has superseded what my note was, including the original taxes and my insurance. I just want to ask this commission if there is a way that you can consider trying to keep the rate at a sustainable basis. And I know it's tough, and I know that it means jobs and money for you guys, but it's our roofs over our heads. And as we get into it, and you know and understand the increases, I know this county has grown. You guys have a much bigger balloon budget and complexity that you have to manage too. And we also have a swarm of people coming in, buying homes, buying townhomes. I've seen the organic growth in Cobb. And for all of that additional growth and then saddling existing homeowners with 20%, 25%, 40% increases, it's not sustainable, and it crushes us. That's all that I have to say. Thank you.
I'm not here to complain, but just to present the facts and maybe some solutions. Couple of highlights from the county budget--
Excuse me, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Derek Whitner.
Thank you, Derek.
Cobb Association of Realtors, 2024 President. Couple of highlights from the county budget. Cobb traditionally has a lower tax burden than any other metro county. The general fund millage rate remains lowest of the core counties. Your core counties are Fulton, DeKalb, Gwinnett, and they even throw in the city of Atlanta for grins and giggles. The sales tax rate is tied for the lowest in the state. Cobb has fewer employees per capita than any other metro county. We've got a AAA bond rating. But the 2025 budget has $1.27 billion in spending, which is $41.3 million increase in the general fund from the current fiscal year of 2024 budget. There's a proposed property tax revenue increase of 9% versus 2024. Last year, the county digest increased by 15.7% due to the rising property values. This year, the Cobb appraiser, Stephen White, is looking for like a 7.5% increase. While this rate of increase has slowed, the values will continue to rise. And we'll have this issue once again next year. I was going to hit you guys with some more numbers, but let's talk about one of my clients. I'm a realtor. A widower and a retiree that's on fixed income, I helped her relocate to Cobb in 2017. She purchased a modest home for $153,000. That home now sells for $325,000. Her escrow payments have gone up several times, and her struggle is real. She's having to decide between food and cutting her pills in half to stretch her medication. So what can we do to curtail some of this pain that our constituents, that we are facing? We can roll back the general fund rate. That's an option. We can even increase the homestead to offset the increase in the general fund. The Realtors do not support this increase in property taxes. Thank you.
This evening, I'm speaking as a concerned citizen of Cobb County. The majority of my life, I have lived within a budget, especially during the time I was employed as an educator while being a single parent. Even with a master's degree, my salary still was such that my son qualified for reduced lunch at his elementary school. The other evening, my husband of almost eight years, Dave McFarland, who spoke earlier, was watching a movie with me where the mom was having to return groceries because she couldn't afford, didn't have enough to pay, and asked me if I've ever had to do that. And I said, absolutely. But I learned to put the items that weren't a necessity at the back to see if I could be able to afford to purchase the item and avoid embarrassment. I also became really adept at keeping a running total in my mind whenever I was shopping, skills I still use today that apparently some of our commissioners seem to struggle with. Now that I'm retired, I continue to keep a budget vigilantly, and especially this year as I had health issues resulting in meeting not only my deductible but also my maximum out-of-pocket. I've had to say no to more things than I've said yes this year, more than ever. Many of your constituents also have had to say no more than they say yes. In a recent conversation with a friend of mine who works with homeless in outreach, she reported seeing an increase in seniors who are now homeless due to a combination of a health crisis in addition with a housing crisis that's caused them to lose their ability to live independently in their homes. I also have concern about the increase in the ad valorem tax as it also continues to impact on our ability. Your constituents, as has already been mentioned, we're struggling with increasing food prices, housing prices, fuel prices. I know my auto insurance went up 20%, and I was told that was better than some of my neighbors whose insurance went up 30%. So I realize this is probably a moot point, and you've probably already made up your mind, but I just wanted you to think a moment about the tax burden on your constituents during these difficult and challenging times.
We were told that we were to address the chair. So I'm going to address the chair concerning this millage increase. I would, I think we would really like for you to do for us what was done for you when in three years you didn't get a tax increase. Your assessment value was the same, and I think you provided proof as to why that happened. But people are struggling right now. I woke up the other morning and turned on my TV, and there was a program there that said that there are people who are paying $5,000 a year for gas, I mean, to get back and forth to work. So I calculated the amount of gas that I use, not anywhere near 5,000, but it's a good bit. I mean, and if I was still working, mine would be even more. I get in my car, and I drive from East Cobb to West Cobb to South Cobb. And you guys are building everywhere. I mean, I'm talking about building everywhere. Why can't some of this new development offset these millage increases? Because you've got to be collecting taxes for these new developments. So why is it that you cannot roll it back when I live off of Maberton Parkway? There's one, two, three, four, four developments going on just on Maberton Parkway. New developments where some of them are finished, some of them are unfinished, but people are moving in. So what happens to that tax revenue? And then the finance director is saying it would only save $9 million. I mean, how much have you spent on consultants? You know, I mean, can't some of that money be put back into the budget? You know, to where you can roll it back, where people can see? And as the gentleman said, I mean, I know for sure in South Cobb, there are seniors who are breaking pills apart to make a 30-day supply. I mean, because they can only afford 15, a 15-day supply. So they're breaking their pills in half to have that 30-day supply. So the only thing I say to you, Chair Cupid, tonight is that you vote in our favor and give us the same courtesy that was given to you when you went three years without a property--
Excuse me, ma'am. Your time's up.
Hi, my name's Robin Moody. I have been a property owner in Cobb since 2005. My tax bills have gone up in five years from about $1,900 to $3,600. I'm a single mom, and like many of my friends, I've had to take on a single, take on extra side jobs just to cover our living expenses. This summer, I'm going to be honest, like, we didn't get to go anywhere. Like, I couldn't afford it. It's kind of embarrassing to say, but whatever. I'm in groups, and I've heard from other local East Cobb moms. One of them said, "Our taxes have gone up 35% in the last two years." And another single mom friend of mine, she also has four kids, she says, "If this Cobb tax increase happens, I'm going to have to sell my house and move out of Cobb County. My house payment has already increased by over $700 a month from taxes and increased insurance." Georgia law requires you to set the millage rate to the rollback rate when there is no tax increase. You hold this tax increase hearing because Georgia law requires you to have this hearing when you vote to raise taxes. I talk to people everywhere I go, like, I just like to talk to people. Publix, Kroger, the Aldi, which does have the best prices if you're trying to save money. We've had to cut back. So y'all's budget's going to go up 20%. I would love, and we, the people, would love to get 20% more next year to buy groceries, would we not? And pay for gas and for clothes for our kids? You know? I am, and I know I speak for thousands of voting Cobb residents, when I say I'm opposed to you voting to raise our property taxes by raising the millage rate to last year's rate, because our poor and our marginalized people are suffering, the lower and the middle class is suffering. Guys, we, the people, are poor. Thank you.
My name is Virginia Choate. I have lived here 42 years. I am addressing this to the majority and to Chair Cupid. Your goal seems to be a remake of our county on the back of citizens just trying to get by and can lose their homes. Many of them work two jobs and cannot be here to speak for themselves. The definition of a budget is to plan how much money you will spend on something. It sounds like to me your plan is to spend, and that should be your motto.
My name is John Lively, and I want to thank you for letting us speak our minds tonight. The state of Georgia has specific laws regarding property tax millage rate rollbacks. The Cobb County Board's proposal to essentially increase the millage rate thus, or kill the rollback, thus resulting in 9% higher property taxes, effectively supersedes Georgia law. Furthermore, this rate increase is being made prior to an election cycle when the people of Cobb County are allowed to voice their approval or disapproval of the Board's actions. The timing of this vote, plus the lack of specificity, transparency, and many unnecessary budget requirements resulting in these real property tax increases, means this proposal is a fiduciary breach of your office to serve the people of Cobb County. You cannot tell us there is no room in your budget to deal with the county's business without raising taxes at three times the rate of inflation. Coupled with other tax proposals that you have on the docket, it is clear to this resident voter that this Board, as constituted, does not have the best interests of the citizens of this county. We will see you in November and hopefully not thereafter.
My name is Shaw Shickle-Marshall. Near the conclusion of last week's property tax meeting, the chair made a statement about how it takes courage to roll back the millage rate. I disagree. It does not take courage to follow the law. It takes morals and ethics to do that. The power to tax was created to provide for the essential needs of the people, not to create a windfall for the government. During times of inflation, state law requires a rollback of the millage to a rate that would allow for the collection of money equal to the amount of money collected the previous year. Given that the majority of this commission voted not to roll back the rate last year, and it's highly probable those same commissioners will cast the same vote this year, you are actively choosing to burden people already burdened by inflation. It is clear, where inflation has continued to harm the everyday lives of people, you have chose to greedily benefit from it by increasing the budget based on collection of taxes on overinflated property values. Similar to the chair's statement regarding courage, last year, the current district forecommissioner also used the term courage as a reason for not rolling back the millage. So in essence, you are trying to sell your failure to adhere to what the law proposes as actions to be taken in times of inflation as being courageous, but we are not buying it. True courage requires someone to take actions that the majority of people would be afraid to take, yet the majority of you continue to vote for a tax increase. So if you want us to consider your actions courageous, pivot from this continuous agenda to tax the people and change your minds about voting for the millage rate to remain the same instead of rolling it back as proposed under the law. instead of rolling it back as proposed under the law.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Adams, and I want to talk about tax hikes. Back in 2018, I watched, I was in this building as I watched Mike Boyce, Commission Chair, Cupid, and Bob Weatherford smile and say, "This tax increase is going to be more than enough." And every year after that, the vote has been not to reduce the millage rate, to reflect, to offset the increase in home valuations. And here we are in 2024. I was blessed, I went into my old neighborhood where my house was, and I got to knock on my old house. And the new owner was there, and I introduced myself, and it was a wonderful conversation. Until I asked him, "How much are your tax valuations now?" And if I wore dentures, I would have spit him out. Because in, when, when I sold my house in 2021, it was just over $2,400. And now, that home valuation is at $4,000. And y'all, that is not a huge subdivision with a gargantuan country club in it. These are modest, homeworking people. I knocked on all those doors. I saw the people that were hurting. I saw the people that were saying they're having to choose, just as they're saying, between whether they're gonna make their groceries. You know, Aldi, Aldi's got great prices, but it ain't free. And, and they're, they're cutting away from so much. We have, listen, we're, we're talking about a sleight of hand. To say that we have the lowest property rates, but we're going up on the home valuation, so it's disingenuous to say that we have the lowest millage rate? Because we're going up according, and allowing the increase in home valuations? And we're talking 40%? Listen, I'm just gonna say it bluntly, if I may. Our budget is bloated more than a fat man after a great Thanksgiving dinner. And it is time, it is time for us to be fiscal conservatives. Stop acting like our money is your money. And let us, let us thrive as families. We don't live to just make Cobb County great. We gotta live for our families too. And it can't be at the expense of our families. I sat there and talked to single moms in my old subdivision that are worried about how they're gonna make their mortgages. I've gone around in apartment dwellings, and they're scared to death that they can't make their rent. And yet, we're going up on them unmercifully. Well, it's time for us to come together as a community and stop bloating the budget. Look, make it a win-win for us all. Thank you.
Hugh Norris here, longtime Cobb County resident. I'm not going, I'm totally against this tax increase. But I'm not gonna offer any new facts. I want to make an observation. I think we're, I think the United States is supposed to be based on representative government, and Cobb County should fall in that, that vein too. Recently, in the city of Austell, they, they took up a millage or tax crease on the property and whatever, and the mayor was pushing it, like certain people on this Cobb County Commission Board. Well, the people showed up, the constituents showed up. And apparently, the city of Austell, the members of the City Council understand that they're supposed to represent their constituents. So every single City Council member in Austell voted against the, the tax or millage rate increase, whatever, on the property, and left the mayor to hang out to dry where he belonged, totally exposed. So I'm just gonna be real curious. Some of the earlier speakers have, have alleged that the majority of this Board does not care what their constituents want. Well, so far, every single speaker has been against this. So we shall see where you all shake out. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maria Cooper. I've lived in Cobb County since 91. I, I've spoken to you guys before. I am, to reiterate, I am totally against any tax increase. I am for you guys looking inwards and cleaning out the waste and the fraud and the corruption. No consultants, no marketing, to use fancy language, to pull a wool over our eyes. You, the law says you're supposed to roll back the millage rate to neutral position, and that would result in no property inta, property tax increase. So y'all need to do that. Roll it back, so there is no property tax increase. Simple, bottom line, this very handsome, well-dressed gentleman who explained the budget, fancy language, very convoluted. I'm, I'm an educated person, and I had a tough time following him. I'm a smart person, I had a tough time following him. It was very convoluted. The bottom line is, do what the state law says you're supposed to do. Roll it back to a neutral position, so that there is no property tax increase. Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Susan Stravens, and I just want to remind you that we the people have by right, the inherent right, to regulate our internal government. That would be all of you. And I'd like to say that I have here a notice to put on the record to Cobb County Commissioners of Bail Administration, cease and desist unlawful taxes and fees against the inalienable rights of the people. Repeal the transportation tax, that 3-2 decision, and remove it and not have it on the ballot, and reduce the transportation budget to balance with the actual fair revenue. And I am against the increases. There are so many people here that have cried out about the impact of this on, on them. And you're here to serve the people, so how can you sit there and raise taxes when you have so many that can't meet their bills? You're here to serve the people. And that means stop stealing from them, and stop robbing from them. And do a correction in how the government has been bloated, and, and turn it back. And like I said before, I know it's a hard job, but I have faith in God that you could do it, and you could do it justly and righteously, and serve the people of Cobb County, in Jesus's name, amen.
Pamela Riordan, and I live in East Cobb, and I'm for all of Cobb. And I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, just so you know. So I know that the three Democrats on this Board are not gonna vote to lower the millage rate. I know they're not going to do that because they're still ingrained in Bidenomics. But guess what? We gotta take up the Megagonomics. Because that's the only way we're gonna change this. Because this county, if it continues the way it's going, is going to go down. Right? And you ju, you saw the trend. The percentage collection is going down. And that reason is because you're spending too much. And there are many, many places in that budget where you don't have to spend. And I can just give you the one example with Betty. Did bring up the $5 million to the consultants. And as you know, that whole project is just a mess because in other counties, they got their ARPA funds right away. They didn't spend $5 million for nothing. And the people here, that the charities that needed it, still don't have the money. So that was a big waste. The big waste that you want to spend on, on a amasplast, and then go around and say, "This is an information tour." No, we're, we're trying to educate you, and we need to re-educate you. I feel like I'm in Nazi Germany where you, we are spending the money to tell us that we want something which we don't want. And that continues on and on and on, on this Board. And I think it will not change until there's a change on the Board and we have the majority back.
Good evening. Y'all know why we're here. Good evening. Y'all know why we're here. And you know what we're talking about. One of you should focus really quick. We're gonna talk about the budget tonight. Your main job is to manage this county, but you have to set a budget every year. That's in your laws, that's what you're there for. All the rest of this is just something you do for fun. But this right here, that's what you've gotta do. To the Chairwoman herself, there's a problem here. These people don't trust you. Not one damn bit. You put words in Bill's mouth, I know you do. You come around and put words in somebody else over there. I thought she broke her foot kicking somebody, I had my hands tied, oh, God. Chairwoman, these people don't trust you. We're living in a county of 800,000 people. When you make this budget, make it for the people. If you've got some personal agenda, take it the hell over to Russia. You and Putin deserve each other. Cobb County is for the people that live here in Cobb County. You've got to understand, I understand the budget. As little, I didn't understand damn thing you put up there. I understand that money has to be budgeted. I live on a budget. I don't have a choice. It's not coming anywhere else. You have to realize that people live on a budget. You're going to overinflate the taxes in this county to the point where people can't live here. Oh, we can dance around and say, "We've got a 6% sales tax, we've got the lowest millage." We discussed millage last week, the other meeting. Millage is a funny number because some counties use it this way, some counties use it that way. What the heck are you doing? What are you trying to succeed in? Ruining people just for the rich? I can carry my old poor ass out of here? No, hell no, hell no. I'm gonna fight you every tooth and nail. Now, we heard the Braves men get up there. We knew that the Braves were gonna cost us a little bit of money. How do you budget for something like that? Well, it's turned out to be a good thing, whether they like it or not. Giving money to public servants, they are the ones keeping the crime rate low, so I don't have to carry a gun. I do not have to have a gun on me in Cobb County or the city of Marietta. What I have to do is get y'all to listen, five of you though. I don't want to pick on one. There's five of you up there, y'all to go in a room-
Your time, your time is expired.
Good evening, Chair Cupid, Commissioners, Dr. McMorris, Donna Court from Commissioner Richardson's Proud District 2. And I'm going to say I support you, I do trust you, and I trust all the hard work of the many hours, the service that you all have given to our county. Like one of the young ladies ahead of me did say, I speak for many people who are also not here. People who are in the healthcare industry, moms who have two jobs, folks who have to work from home, but people who would love to be here. And I speak on their behalf because they cannot come. I just want to say thank you.
Excuse me for a moment, there are some people who are being pretty rude as you're speaking. So we can just go ahead and just pause until they can stop and get that out their system, and then we'll continue.
Thank you, Chair Cupid, and thank you for all the polite people. I don't think it's so easy sometimes. I know it's not easy for any of you up there. This is your house, this is a business meeting, and from the business that, that we do, yes, people have the right to say things.
Excuse me, hold on, please, please. As quiet as it is right now, I just ask that it be that quiet as she continues her remarks, as we have been towards others. But we'll give them an extra 15 seconds so they can get it out their system. May I go ahead?
Thank you, ma'am. I really just want to say that we appreciate you. I know that my remarks aren't as popular. I'm not gonna get any cheers, or claps, or yays, or go-girl when I sit back down, but I think it's important that we do respect each other. And I sometimes wonder, Chairwoman Cupid, because knowing that hurt people act because they themselves have been hurt, I sometimes wonder how some of these folks were treated at home because I sense a lot of violence in their own lives. Violence speak.
Okay, go, you can go.
That's all I wanted to say, is that I feel my heart goes out, actually, not only to you as Commissioners and our wonderful servants, but I actually feel for these people, because I feel like that they are hurt people. But I continue to thank you for all that you do. And please vote in favor of this budget. Thank you.
Let me just stop for a moment, you know?
When you're ready.
Yes. I would just ask for those who are here today know that I'm truly trying to provide an environment, when we have our public speakers, to give them the full due respect that they should have when they are coming to address their Board, whether or not we share the same opinion with them, or whether or not the audience does. As the rights have been protected of those who've come up and spoken, who may share a common opinion, everybody's right, who gets up on that podium over there to speak, deserves that same respect. Everyone, including you, Mr. Bar. It's from you. So I would just ask again that we give them the same courtesy and respect. You may continue.
Thank you, Chairwoman. My name is Mindy Seeger. It's been a few meetings since I've been here. And I just, I took a few notes, but before I get there regarding this topic, but I just want to say, there have been several meetings that I have attended or have watched online, where the former speaker, who is a friend of mine, has gotten up to speak, and this audience of regular attendees has decided that it is okay to laugh at someone that I think is a kind spirit, that is a healthcare worker that works in our community, that works in our community for our seniors on the District 2 Cabinet. And I think she has more than earned the respect of at least silence in this room. It's classless and sad in its notice. You may get cheers in this room, but I promise you at home, there are people that think you are fools. And I need you to know that. Donna is kinder than I am. I am nice, not kind. There is a difference. I noticed a few things that I noted and I just want to make sure that I understand because I have missed a few meetings and just trying to catch up. But as I understand it, as to what was explained, in this, the millage rate, what is proposed in the financial year 2024, we are keeping the millage rate the same for the general fund, the fire fund, CID district and Six Flags. I believe that to be correct. That's what's in my notes. And that while the overall net taxable digest does increase, we're looking at the millage rate staying the same. And that was attributed to the floating home state having no change, increase to the fire fund, which I feel like is, I'm okay with that, and an increase to school tax. So if those are where increases is coming from, I'm just a little concerned where the vitriol is coming from in this meeting and not at the school board where a majority of these taxes get spent. I have two children in the Cobb County education system. I'm happy to invest my money there. I'm happy that they recently made the decision to not spend $50 million on an unneeded event center that was going to have hospitality suites, but I don't hear those things mentioned at those meetings. So maybe we're just in the wrong place. I did also note, if I just want to make sure I'm correct here, that if we were to go to the rollback rate, we're looking at a savings in the example that was given of $34.67 for that home. Is that correct? Annually. So I just want to make notes of those few things. I found the presentation fairly easy to follow. There is a little bit when you get into fair market value and how some of those assessments are done, but those are done on comps. And that has more to do with how our homes are selling and what they're increasing at. I know I wouldn't want to pay for my home what my tax assessment rate was, but I know that it's fair based on the real estate comps that were pulled for that because I pulled them myself. So that's all I have. I just wanted to say thank you and I trust this board to make wise decisions. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Pat Panko. I've been in Cobb County, Mabelton, since 1998. I am on the fence on whether or not I do trust you because y'all have been up here just stating that the general fund will not increase. Well, right here, I have 23 and 24, and the county general increased $150. So where are you getting that the Cobb general stays the same? Right here in black and white. So again, I don't really trust y'all. Many of these people have expressed how they are struggling. And when their tax goes from 2,000 to 4,000 to 5,000, with the gas, kids and everything else, I don't feel that it's right that we need to be burdened and stressed on what in the hell is going to happen October 15th when I don't have it. What are you going to do for me? Kick me out of my house that I've worked for since, ever since I've been here and pay it off? You're going to kick me out of it because I can't come up with the property tax. Is that fair? My other question is, the increase in the school tax. There's only so many schools in Cobb County. Y'all flounder and flaunt on how much the Georgia Lottery is taking in for school education. Now, let's be transparent on what the Georgia Lottery is paying for and what these residents are paying for. Because something ain't adding up right. And that's, you know what I mean? Times are tough all around. Don't get me, you know, don't get me wrong. But this increase, we don't have Capital City Club. We don't, we're not able to go just walk in and play golf on some golf course for our property tax money. That's a lot of money annually that these families need to come up with to stay in their home. You know, we don't have no fancy pool over there. We can't walk in here to the Marietta Conference Center and go swimming, but we have to come up with that money to stay in our house. Something has to give and I ask you to reconsider this increase. Thank you very much. And again, let's try to be more transparent to the people that actually run the county and pay for everybody's salary. And let's just be real and not make things any worse than they already are. Thank you.
My name's Melinda Conti. I'm a newer Cobb resident. I moved here during COVID. First, I would like to put in a formal request that you go back to the school board and you ask them to relook at the proposed budget. Because there has to be savings there too. And you do have the ability to do that. You do not have to rubber stamp their proposed budget. So that is the first thing. Yes, that a lot of the increase is in the school budget. But you have that power. And let them prove exactly what they say they need if it comes to that, instead of a rubber stamp. Number two, we talk about consultants. Consultants only save money if they're replacing an employee that is needed. If they are giving guidance, then they are not a money-saving vehicle. Right? A consultant that is hired to tell us something that an employee would not be hired to do, there is no tax savings. There is no savings in the budget for that. So these consultants that you've said have saved money have saved nothing. So everyone understands the purpose of a consultant and how it can save in a budget if it replaces an employee so that there is not health insurance costs, tax costs that the county would have to pay. Third, we are being taxed by not rolling back the millage rate on unattained gains on our properties. My home may have increased in value, but I don't have access to that increased value. Because my neighbors sold their home, they gained that additional money. But I don't have access to that. When you choose to tax me on what the assessed appraised value, minus my little exemption, right? When you choose to take the assessment on my appraised value, you are taxing me on unrealized gains. That's facts. None of us, that is a fact. None of us have access to that reality. When we buy our homes, we look at the possibility that things are going to increase in cost. No one expects hundreds of dollars a month.
Ma'am, sorry, your time's up.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann Ryan. I'm a 40-year resident of Cobb County, retired pharmacist, farm D. And I felt like I've had to get active because I did not see what was, I did not like what was going on in the county. And then two women came up here. One of them said that we insulted you. And then she, in turn, told everybody that we were crazy and, you know, and that we might have a problem at home. What do you mean you insulted? You insulted all of us. I know that Mindy Seeger works or worked for you and probably the other lady does too. But I cannot believe that she called the kettle black. That was just not fair. And also, this is our house. The, our county built this. You didn't build it and we want to be served by you. Thank you.
Commissioner Cupid.
Sir, may you state your name first?
It is.
Let's go ahead and take a recess. Let's just go ahead and take a recess. Sorry, excuse me. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We are in the midst of our millage hearing, and we do have a speaker that's before us, and I do ask that we provide him opportunity to address the board without interruption. Sir, if you can help us and state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
David Holmes, Cobb County resident for thirty years. Twenty-nine years as a Realtor, so thank you for our Cobb Association Realtor President coming and speaking for a brief period. You may remember me from last year, you may not. I came before you, spoke three times. This year, I didn't really feel up to how to work as well, but I felt compelled to come this evening. And I'll start with my finish. I ask you to figure out how to tighten the belt. Well, you've heard here tonight as many people are struggling. I hear that. I shared with you last year that I own nineteen houses in this county. I live in one. That's thirty years of ninety-hour work weeks. I was not born rich, I was born poor. And I feel people, I feel my real estate clients struggling. I feel my tenants struggling. When I came before you last year, and it was an enormous, you've heard the percentage increase. And a couple of things I'd like to point out is about one-third historically of folks are renters. So we talked about homeowners. I'm one. My taxes have gone up more than doubled in twenty years in my house. Thirty years again in Cobb County. But they raise the taxes pretty much on all the rental properties every year. And I shared with you a story of a single mom that the tax bill on that particular house more than doubled. It was gonna mean a hundred seventy-five dollars more each month. And I would have to raise her taxes. And I shared with y'all that story. You heard me, but I don't know if you really listened to what I had to say. And I know there's a lot to this. There's this young man with the red solo cups like the Braves, that's pretty good, I love it. But what happens is when we all get that document, and this is what you pay at the bottom, people feel that, and I get it. And Commissioner Richardson, you educated me on, I think you did too Commissioner, on how we lock the value of the home. But the trouble is, being a Realtor, people don't stay in for thirty years. Turns over, turns over, values go up, values go up. And again, my main point is, I've got a lot of experience in this, and I've got a heart with people. That lady I told you about, I'm ready to her rent a hundred dollars that year. I ate the hundred. I ate the hundred, so that's for my family. And you just gotta look and tighten your budget, please. Because that's what this really all comes down to. Folks can't afford it, whether it's the school. Maybe y'all could talk together, y'all work in Cobb County. I don't know, just a suggestion. Figure out how to get this down, because people are struggling. Don't believe the media. The economy's not doing that great, and I think y'all know that. You go to grocery stores, so I know y'all probably made your decision, because I've been to these things before, but please think about it next year. And that's it, with five seconds to go. Appreciate your service, too.
We'll take our next speaker.
Hello, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Christine Rosman. I think it's being, like, it's pretty clear how the constituents feel. Other than a couple of people that I guess are not affected, and don't care about spending more money and having bigger government, and then criticizing those of us who do. And anyway, I think it's pretty clear. It's almost, I was trying to do an analogy, and it's kind of like, okay, if you have a pizza and you say, "Oh, I'm only going to eat a quarter of it," but then you get a pizza that's this big, and then you say, "I'm just gonna eat a quarter of it," then you get kind of fat, right? So I think that that's kind of like the houses. Is that if we came in and we just want to, you know, get a reasonable home, you know what your taxes are gonna be? And then when it artificially gets inflated and gets totally jacked up, and this is, by the way, and I'm sure you guys get this concept, it is not sustainable, okay? This model is not sustainable. So it's like, it's just not sustainable. So we need you to represent us. We're looking for representation and not dictatorship. Because I think people are very clear. And if we aren't as snazzy in the way that we speak, like, we don't sound like we work for Deloitte or Accenture or Chrysalis Lab or something, and we're just like average people, but our average money, you have a good time spending it. And so, again, we are citizens, and we are not peasants. And it's time that you remember that. And thank God, there's an election coming up, but unfortunately, unfortunately, there's an election coming up, too. And so I think that people, unless you're like, not paying attention to anything, we're seeing that not only our county, we're questioning our county, we're questioning our whole country, and the infrastructure of our country, and our parties, and what the heck is happening. And so I think that as people are waking up, and I know this love fest of like, "Oh, we just love you," you know, the ladies that do, there are a lot of us that aren't as enamored with you, but when things get really bad, people are not gonna be happy with you when they can't afford to frickin' eat. Thank you.
We'll take our next speaker.
Hello, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Christine Rosman. I think it's being, like, it's pretty clear how the constituents feel. Other than a couple of people that I guess are not affected, and don't care about spending more money and having bigger government, and then criticizing those of us who do. And anyway, I think it's pretty clear. It's almost, I was trying to do an analogy, and it's kind of like, okay, if you have a pizza and you say, "Oh, I'm only going to eat a quarter of it," but then you get a pizza that's this big, and then you say, "I'm just gonna eat a quarter of it," then you get kind of fat, right? So I think that that's kind of like the houses. Is that if we came in and we just want to, you know, get a reasonable home, you know what your taxes are gonna be? And then when it artificially gets inflated and gets totally jacked up, and this is, by the way, and I'm sure you guys get this concept, it is not sustainable, okay? This model is not sustainable. So it's like, it's just not sustainable. So we need you to represent us. We're looking for representation and not dictatorship. Because I think people are very clear. And if we aren't as snazzy in the way that we speak, like, we don't sound like we work for Deloitte or Accenture or Chrysalis Lab or something, and we're just like average people, but our average money, you have a good time spending it. And so, again, we are citizens, and we are not peasants. And it's time that you remember that. And thank God, there's an election coming up, but unfortunately, unfortunately, there's an election coming up, too. And so I think that people, unless you're like, not paying attention to anything, we're seeing that not only our county, we're questioning our county, we're questioning our whole country, and the infrastructure of our country, and our parties, and what the heck is happening. And so I think that as people are waking up, and I know this love fest of like, "Oh, we just love you," you know, the ladies that do, there are a lot of us that aren't as enamored with you, but when things get really bad, people are not gonna be happy with you when they can't afford to frickin' eat. Thank you.
We'll take our next speaker.
We'll take our next speaker.
Hello, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Christine Rosman. I think it's being, like, it's pretty clear how the constituents feel. Other than a couple of people that I guess are not affected, and don't care about spending more money and having bigger government, and then criticizing those of us who do. And anyway, I think it's pretty clear. It's almost, I was trying to do an analogy, and it's kind of like, okay, if you have a pizza and you say, "Oh, I'm only going to eat a quarter of it," but then you get a pizza that's this big, and then you say, "I'm just gonna eat a quarter of it," then you get kind of fat, right? So I think that that's kind of like the houses. Is that if we came in and we just want to, you know, get a reasonable home, you know what your taxes are gonna be? And then when it artificially gets inflated and gets totally jacked up, and this is, by the way, and I'm sure you guys get this concept, it is not sustainable, okay? This model is not sustainable. So it's like, it's just not sustainable. So we need you to represent us. We're looking for representation and not dictatorship. Because I think people are very clear. And if we aren't as snazzy in the way that we speak, like, we don't sound like we work for Deloitte or Accenture or Chrysalis Lab or something, and we're just like average people, but our average money, you have a good time spending it. And so, again, we are citizens, and we are not peasants. And it's time that you remember that. And thank God, there's an election coming up, but unfortunately, unfortunately, there's an election coming up, too. And so I think that people, unless you're like, not paying attention to anything, we're seeing that not only our county, we're questioning our county, we're questioning our whole country, and the infrastructure of our country, and our parties, and what the heck is happening. And so I think that as people are waking up, and I know this love fest of like, "Oh, we just love you," you know, the ladies that do, there are a lot of us that aren't as enamored with you, but when things get really bad, people are not gonna be happy with you when they can't afford to frickin' eat. Thank you.
We'll take our next speaker.
Hill, right? I thought about handing out some earplugs to some of you on the board members. This precaution would be to ensure there's no doubt that you won't listen to people's plight. If you have a genuine, you'd have a genuine excuse when you vote to increase property tax, you couldn't hear us. That would save you time rolling out all the excuses you had the last two hearings and all the excuses Bill's gotta roll out to save you. Chair Cupid, let's be clear. This tax increase is not the state legislator's fault for requiring property assessments, nor the tax assessors' fault for performing them. It's not because people ask you not to overrun their neighborhoods with increased density or the lack of homes being built. No amount of misinformation can deflect responsibility for where it truly lies. With your vote, you vote to raise taxes. Without your vote, taxes will not go up. The buck stops with you, stop trying to excuse it away. Another misdirection you use is to blame the school board. It's not the school board here tonight raising taxes, it's you right here tonight. Chair Cupid, you say, "Nothing I say minimizes your property taxes going up. It's difficult for all of us, it's difficult for my family, it's ridiculous to me when I think about how much we're paying." No, what's truly ridiculous is making such statements when simultaneously voting to raise taxes. Raising taxes won't just make it difficult, it will force people out of their homes and apartments. How dare you play on our sympathy and then vote to raise taxes, knowing the devastating impact it will have on people's lives. You talk about courage, yet you don't have the courage to call it what it is. A tax increase hearing, be upfront with your vote. Some of our board members claim this tax increase is necessary for specific needs. You say we need twenty-five million dollars for public safety, yet last year you gave the sheriff twenty-five million in unbudgeted dollars, and you're sitting on another two-hundred-and-fifty-million contingency fund. This excuse side sets a real issue. What cuts are being made in the rest of the budget? Why don't you discuss the rest of the budget in detail? In a few minutes, you'll present a budget that conveniently requires taxing the unrealized gains in real estate market value increases. You didn't tell us that Sheriff Owens, you didn't tell Sheriff Owens to buy the Clydesdale horses, but you gave him too much money so he could. Last year, you handed him twenty-five million dollars unbudgeted. This year, you're giving him thirteen million increase, which is over half the public safety dollars. So what's the plan for such a large contingency fund? More consultants, which you claim provide fixed costs and not distract from staff? Do we need consultants to draft new, a new rain tax, new one percent sales tax, a complete rewrite of zoning codes, or costly projects? I ask you, listen to the people. Don't do this. Don't raise taxes on people now.
Are there any other speakers?
Tracy Stevenson. First of all, let me speak to DeCoro. I hundred percent agree that we ought to be respectful and kind. I think that everybody deserves to be listened to and deserves to be heard. That said, I literally sat in front of these people that dressed us down and heard backbiting comment after backbiting comment. You know, so at the end of the day, it does cut both ways, folks. All right, I'm sure Bonnie's a nice person, I don't know her, she seems sweet as can be. I know Mindy's got a lot to say often, that's okay. I've treated everybody here with respect every time I've spoken, I believe y'all can agree with that. I will continue to do so. That said, let me go into the next portion of my conversation. We did a poll, just a quick poll, on Nextdoor. It pretty much represented what we've seen tonight. Ninety-six percent of the respondents said, "I want lower taxes, roll back the millage rate" to seven-point-seven-six-one. Seven, four percent said, "I want higher taxes," believe it or not. Pretty sure three of the board members were on my poll. Just kidding. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, the people who spoke, have spoken here tonight, I think you hear it. I don't know whether you care, but I know you hear it. When I look at the budget, y'all heard me pound on this whole Ms. Ploss conversation and the whole bus system multiple times. In this budget, the line item went from twenty-nine million budgeted to operate the existing twelve routes in the existing bus system. It went up to thirty-eight million dollars. It's gonna collect four million or so in revenues as a stretch objective. You're gonna finance over twenty million dollars of it out of the general fund. The rest of it comes from magic fairy dust somewhere in terms of grants and so forth. It's real hard to follow where that money's projected to come from. Got a pretty good idea it's gonna truly come from the general fund, or at least part of it will. But at the end of the day, the Ms. Ploss is bad. It's a bad idea. We've got twelve routes, you're gonna add twelve routes, magically you're gonna, twelve's a magic number, because there's gonna be a twelve-fold increase in ridership. At the end of the day, we cannot afford what we're doing right now. We need to hold our, we need to tighten our belt. When I listened to Bill's presentation, it was all tied to the millage rate for homes with homestead exemption. But you're not looking at all the rental properties. At least half the homes here are rental properties. And so, and, you know, we have a commercial business as well. Those commercial properties, those taxes go up, too. Who does that get passed on to? Gets passed on to the consumer. So the taxation doesn't end. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take our next speaker. Okay, not seeing any additional speakers, we'll close the hearing. Bill asked that you approach. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for Bill? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Sure. One of the questions I will probably defer for the budget hearing, and that's related to the transportation costs, the increase, and where some of that's coming from. But one thing I did want to just ask again, because I heard at the top, and I didn't write it fast enough, but given the rollback, the house that you used as the example, what would be the savings for that?
Okay, so we used two examples. We used the homesteaded property, and then we also used a value of a property that does not have homestead. So the value, the fair market value of the non-homesteaded property, we used a value of four-hundred-and-fifty thousand. If we were to go to the rollback rate, that would be one-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and eighty-three cents per year, or nine dollars and ninety cents per month. That is for a non-homesteaded property. For the homesteaded property that we gave as an example, it originally had a fair market value of four-hundred-and-eighty thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars. It was reassessed at six-hundred-and-forty-six thousand and ten dollars. If we were to go to the rollback rate for this property, because of their homestead exemption, their value is locked in at a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. That rollback rate would generate thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents annually, or two dollars and eighty-nine cents per month. Now, again, everybody's homestead is different, because it depends on when you lock it in, longer in your house, and the more your property has been reassessed at a higher value, the bigger that exemption grows. But I know we've had some citizens, and rightfully so, as houses turn over, and if I were to sell my house, for example, and I had been in it thirty years, my homestead was locked, the person buying that house would reset that value and apply that homestead exemption. Now, again, that goes both ways. As values drop, that value would come down, and as values increase, it locks it in. So you always have the ability, in a decreasing market, to reevaluate your homestead and re-lock. So that is, that is an option.
Thank you. And I know there were several speakers that were addressing the new development that's occurring in different places around the county. And my understanding, all of those would basically become, when they, when someone moves into them and they are purchased, that is when that property tax would, would be realized at that point in time, and it would be at that year that it would be locked in. But as they're developing that parcel, how does that property tax get calculated?
So as construction takes place, it is originally valued at the, let's say it was a vacant piece of land. That value would stay until it is reassessed and completed. Then the value would be set based on an assessment, if it does not sell right away. So, but then, once it sells, it would be set at that new value. So that is kind of how the process works, and it also depends on the timing in which construction happens, because the evaluation is done January first of every year. So if you broke ground January second, that value will remain the same, because the next assessment won't take place till almost a year later.
And so a lot of the increase that we're seeing on the property tax digest total towards the general fund, that's coming from new developments and conceding the rental properties?
Yes, I would say, that's fair to say. It's development and reassessment of non-homesteaded properties. That's where you're seeing the growth. So that is one of the areas, I think, because I heard a constituent mention this. Chairman Lee set the millage rate. The idea was, this would be a millage rate we could leave in place and rely on growth. And that has been the case since 2018.
Stayed flat since then.
Chairman Boyes.
Sorry, did I, if I didn't say, sorry, Chairman Boyes.
Okay, and yeah, I just, I do want to just make general comments for the audience, you know. I personally absolutely feel the pain, whether or not it's perceived by the audience or not. But there are certainly a lot of specific initiatives that I'm hoping, regardless of what occurs today, that you will continue in having the conversation to get some of these more structural opportunities in place. To find savings that matter for the, especially for renters. Because right now, for homeowners, there are certainly built-in legal protections. But for our renters, we do, and not just our renters, we know that small business owners dealing with commercial property as well are also affected. So if there is sincere interest in looking for those savings, there are some opportunities to explore that. So if there's real passion in this audience, that door is open to help close out some of those items. But this is a separate matter altogether, it's just there are some strategic opportunities that the invitation is open for you to participate in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments?
A quick, just to follow or to piggyback on Richardson's breakdown of the homestead exemption. You mentioned before the comments that there was, and I didn't write this down, but the amount of savings to the residents because of the homestead exemption, or the funds that the county has not collected.
Yes, the homestead exemption generates a savings, savings or reduction in revenue to the county of a hundred-and-seventeen million dollars annually.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other commissioners, do you have any comments? Commissioner Boral? Again, thank you for the number of- Commissioner Campbell, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So Bill, I know you're not gonna be able to answer this question, but if we carefully listen to what the citizens have been saying for the past five years, you're right, they don't trust us because we're not listening, because we're saying it's only a two-dollar-and-eighty-nine cents a month increase this year. But, and I know you can't, I know you're good, but you're not that good.
I think I know where you're going, and I don't think I can answer that question, but I would be honest.
But essentially, they're expecting the millage to be rolled back to 2018, because everybody in this room has had about a, you can multiply that number by ten or fifteen to get what the real impact has been over the past five years. And I think where the frustration of the public is, is that as a board, government agency, we're not collectively considering that when it comes across to you that we're dismissing you because the homestead exemption zeros everything out. While it zeros everything out for homeowners, it does not zero it out for others. And the bottom line, if it's forty-three, sixty-one, whatever million increase this year, multiply that times the five years, over, from the past five years, we have had to absorb that in- what the real impact has been over the past five years. And I think where the frustration of the public is, is that as a board, government agency, we're not collectively considering that when it comes across to you that we're dismissing you because the homestead exemption zeros everything out. While it zeros everything out for homeowners, it does not zero it out for others. And the bottom line, if it's 43, 61, whatever million increase this year, multiply that times the five years, over, from the past five years, we have had to absorb that in our cost. And we are seeing that with businesses going out, because they can't afford their rent. And it's, it's affecting our lives and our ability to obtain services, whether we can afford them or not, as well. So I think that's where a lot of the anger and the hostility in the room is coming from, is because we are not acknowledging that side of it. And to that, I'm not sure how you, I'm gonna say you, can do any better. The bottom line is, the services are public safety, they do a fantastic job. And we do not hear complaints about when the board goes and expends money on public safety. But it is these other things, and I know you and I were talking about that 12th judge courtroom.
Yes.
That hasn't been assigned a judge. So those are the things that get people up in arms, because we're expected to find the money to do this, and then we don't do it. And I don't expect you to talk about the courtroom right now.
Understood.
So just, just using that as an example. But I think what is also hard, going back to 2018, when the millage rate increase was just justified at that time by the board members that voted on it, cuz I will concede that not everybody up here had the opportunity to weigh into that vote. Our fund balance was very, very low.
Yes.
And yes, we were having to take out TANs, and we were having to do different things to ensure that we had the money to make it to the end of the year. We are not in that position today. And again, I think that is where the people are very upset, because not many of them can have money in the bank earning the interest like the county is on their taxpayer dollars. So again, this is where some of the frustration is. And you know, you sit here and you say, well, the government rating agency is saying we don't have enough of a fund balance, but then why isn't state law changing to reflect what kind of a fund balance we are? And if you go to GAOF, if I said it right, according to them, we're supposed to have a 35% fund balance. If we go above that, it's going to, you know, we're gonna have some explaining to do to the public. So that is, if that is the law, and we're sitting at 47%, that is also causing the frustration, because the only way our fund balance has gone from dangerously low to 47% in essentially five, six years is we're collecting more money than we should. And that collectively... If we sit down, that is collectively what people are upset about year after year after year.
So Commissioner, I do wanna add a couple points to that, cuz you obviously provided some very good background information on that, I think it was very helpful. So one of the things you mentioned is fund balance ups. And you're correct, general fund is north of 40. But again, one of the things they look at, GFOW specifically, it's not a general fund isolation, it's county globally. So for example, the rating agencies score that. Our global fund balance is 32.91% for the rating, rating season this, this year. That scores up a double A rating in that category. One of the areas we talked about in 2018 is improving that fund outs, which we have. It is significantly improved to, from the point where we are not a triple B, single A, we have moved all the way to double A. So we are in a great position. We are still not considered a triple A in that one category. Globally, we are. One of the other areas that you mentioned was borrowing from TANs. We do not do that anymore. Again, conscious decision by the board to improve upon that, and we have. The problem with that is, we still score a triple B in liquidity because of our cash. So that is one of the items that, just based on the way we finished the year. So those are still two challenges. Yes, we have improved, absolutely agree, 100%, and we are moving forward in the right direction. General fund is at a solid position, I would not recommend we continue to grow that, but we have other funds that create that downward trend for that negative to get us from the 40-plus to 32. So there is some layers to unpack with that. But yes, to your point, significant improvements have been made. And then, one of the things you talked about was TANs. Well, the interest earned is one of the things that is positive. By maintaining that cash balance, we generate revenue. That is revenue we don't have to charge residents for, that is revenue that is earned simply by having it in the bank account that pays for expenses. That doesn't just roll into some magic fund or reserve account that is to offset and as part of our balanced budget. One of our biggest lines outside of the property tax revenue increase in 2025 is interest earnings. Now, we all know the rates are extremely high right now, that will not be there forever. So that is something that we always wanna caution, is yes, we can go up to that level, at some point, rates will go down again. And we won't be getting 4% on returns. Those will drop significantly. Now, we do try to utilize those and make them the best rates we can possibly do, but that's money that is generated that goes to fund programs, expenses throughout the county, and that is, again, money we don't have to charge citizens for. So there is a trade-off with that, and if we had zero cash balance, you're right, we would borrowing TANs, having to pay for that loan, we'd also have a lower fund balance because our cash is part of the fund balance number, and that would reduce our rating in that one category. But again, county, globally, the county is very strong. We do have a triple A rating. We've talked about how important that is and how we've maintained that, and that is based on the decisions the board has made. Are we perfect? No, definitely not. Do we have areas that we can improve? Sure. Are there areas we could look at and say, hey, maybe we're outperforming in those? Absolutely, we can evaluate, evaluate each of those.
So this is just one other comment, cuz I know, again, we're in election season. And a lot of people have been doing open record requests, and they are seeing some constitutional officers that have essentially exceeded their budget by great amounts, and or have been expending funds on items that they do not see as adding value to the county. So part of the frustration is, our departments do a great job of maintaining and staying within their budgets, because that is what's helped the fund balance grow to where it is.
Absolutely.
But the constitutional officers are not being as respectful to the general funds as the citizens are requesting of the board. And I know there's a lot, and again, I don't expect an answer from you, but there's a lot of expectations from the citizens that the board is supposed to keep control over these constitutional officers from overspending or expending their taxpayer dollars on funds or items, again, that are not budgeted, planned for, et cetera, et cetera. I know we're always told we have no control over constitutional officers, but we do have control over the budget. So what can we do as a board to make sure that those constitutional officers do not go beyond what we budget, and do not have the ability to pull from this huge fund balance that they know is sitting there at their dispense?
Okay, that's a policy board decision.
Okay, thank you.
Just so those in the audience can, can hear, the chair has responded that that is a policy issue for the board to take. So my question to the county manager is, why don't we have a policy today? Because if we... If, if we are constantly setting a budget, telling the constituents we are setting budgets and we are setting parameters for every department to be within, we, we know, like our legal department and finance and DOT, they all stay within that budget, but it's our constitutional officers that do not. Why don't we have a policy?
Well, that's a board question, but here's what I would recommend, and we've done this in the past, where you all have every opportunity to sit with each elected official, including our constitutional officers, and go over their budget with them. And I know you all have done that, or they have, most of them have tried to reach out to you, right?
I, I will put that on the record.
They may be reaching out to you for increases. They do, because they know that the only way that they're gonna get it is if you approve it via an agenda. We, however, as staff, do not do anything with policy. We implement them. But if this board chooses to say, we do not want to fund at the level that we're funding now a particular office, I think there is a time and place to have that conversation with that constitutional office. Just like you all could meet with the Board of Commissioners departments to say, sit down and explain to me what you're doing, what your expenses are. It is not, however, on me or the, the chief financial officer to tell a constitutional officer where they should cut, what they should cut, because we don't do their operations. But you, the board, could sit down with them and say, I have a problem with the amount of money that you're spending, and therefore, you can have that conversation with them and then make decisions. It is not for us as staff to do that, however.
I see Commissioner Burrell, and then...
Okay, Bill, you and I have had several meetings and conversations back and forth on this. And although we don't control how the constitutional officers spend their budget or what it goes to, and I know we've had comments about the horses and everything else, I did ask, if we kept their budget amount the same as it was last year and not approve an increase, they would have to figure out how they're gonna spend that money, whether it's on personnel or equipment or whatever, capital, repairs, whatever, right?
That is correct. Once you establish a budget, it is up to them to decide how to spend those funds, correct?
Right. So the problem where, the reason you're feeling this increase, not just on appraisals, but these budgets are set every year, and all through the year, items, impact items come back to us to approve, and increases the budget for that, for this year, for next year, that we're getting ready to vote on. So I think if we kept their budget like we do our own departments, because we set the budgets for the courts, the constitutional officers, and if we say, this is, this is what your budget is, and they have to figure out how to spend it, or where to cut. I mean, but the problem is, they're already over their budget from last year. So I mean, that's the only way I know that we can control the budget. They control how they spend it, but we set it as far as the amount that they're given. I was just piggybacking on y'all's dialogue here. The other question I have is, we know it's state law, that we have to advertise the millage as an increase. If we don't roll it back to match, all the way back to match the increase in the digest, which was 9% this year?
It was, the, the proposed millage rate, even though it was flat from last year, is 9% higher than the rollback rate. That's correct.
Right.
And that is how we have to advertise.
Right. So we would have to roll back, what's the general fund, 8.46?
That's correct.
To 7. what? For the 9% to match.
It is, the rollback rate is 7.761 is the rollback rate, and that is where you get the 9%, the difference between the 8.46, which is being proposed, and the rollback rate of 7.761.
So that's .5 mills? No. That's five mills?
No, that's...
Five mills?
You're, you're gonna be just under a mill. So it'll be, it's, it's less than a mill.
It's less than what?
It's less than one mill.
Okay.
8.46 less 7.76.
Okay, so we know that we have things in the budget that have to be sustained every year, and I know that, you know, public safety has, is part of that, or maybe most of that. But public safety is our number one priority, that we have to provide, police, fire, 911. You, you don't wanna call 911 when your house is on fire and not have a fireman there. So, and you and I, but every year, try to back out what we've, what has to be sustainable. And last year, we looked at, well, I threw out a .2 mills, which was something, but wasn't much, but that's all we could, we could do with what had already, was already sustainable from the previous year. Public safety, stepping grade, healthcare, pension, and that, that kind of stuff. There are also 37 new positions that were added last year, and the year before that, 148. So we can't keep adding new when we have 60% vacancies in some departments, and now those have come due, because they have been, what, 40% has been filled of the vacancies and...
Well, we, we filled 70-plus positions countywide during this past year. So those are positions that were previously approved, that we now have a body in providing a service. Now, as, as you're aware, I know, one of the things we've talked about this board specifically is the challenge with public safety, which is one of the reasons, one of the big impact items that we approved, was to improve the stepping grade proposal for public safety because of their vacancy challenge. So hopefully, next year, we're coming back and telling you that was successful, and they filled positions, which will, again, will have a cost, because every vacant position is budgeted at 50% due to natural turnover. But as we see large influxes in those hirings, that will have an increase to your budget, because now you have a full body in there for potentially a full year, depending on how that, how that works out.
Okay, and this year, we hear, we heard from you that someone was considering reducing the fire fund by .02 mills, which is equivalent to a million dollars.
Million dollars.
So there was not a consensus, and rightfully so, to take away from the fire fund when they're short-staffed as it is, and we just put back their millage to where it was prior to the reduction in millage that they took a few years ago. But, and I didn't support taking from the fire fund, but we could have rolled back something in the, in the general fund, maybe not a lot, but, you know, there's some things that we could do without that. I know we can't get to the 7.61, to the full rollback, but each year, I've asked for something to help, because we know, we know what inflation is like, we know what, how high prices are up in bills, and it's, it's just a struggle. Medication, it's, it's not good. So... That's all I have.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, just to piggyback on the last comment, like, that's why I believe it's important that we look at some structural opportunities, because we know that it's gonna be hard to continue to find any kind of cuts, and for anyone that does wanna dig into it, we happy to open that door as well, sit down and go through each line item, I've done that with others. But to find the savings and relief that is desired by community, not just by homeowners, but by renters, as we've already said, that is the heavy impact, and commercial property owners, that is the heavy impact. If you want to find that relief, that relief is in a structural approach. There have been attempts over decades to try to find savings in this budget, and the result came back that the millage had to be increased in 2018. And it wasn't even increased to the level that it needed to be increased that year. And you can ask anyone in county, any of the county departments, and that's true. So here we are today, and we're looking to see where there's buffer, and the reality is, is you've, we've got to look at different structural... And the reality is, is you've, we've got to look at different structural opportunities. But that aside, I, I wanted to just ask a couple of clarifications on the, not to pick too much, but on the constitutional officers. I do want to make it clear, so while we do make those approvals, those things do have to come back to us. And at that point, each consideration is a policy, if it's an overage. Granted, if they move something around within their budget, we don't have oversight over that, per se. But in the process of creating this budget and proposing it for us to review and interpret, there is extensive work that staff does with constitutional officers in evaluating those individual budgets and then sharing with us those recommendations. So, it's not just, I, I do want, I don't want everybody to just think like, we go and sit with, you know, the, the court clerk, and they tell us, "This is what we need." It's, it's, it's a full analysis that staff conducts and then brings back those lists of recommendations on what should stay or what should go, based upon those conversations. And I believe that information is also as a part of an open portal, where they have those descriptions and justifications for those requests, which I think it's only relevant just to, I just want to make sure that we bring in what the request came in as a part of this millage for people to understand the context of not just the reduction of finding, I think it was close to a mil, which is somewhere around twenty-two, somewhere close to twenty-two million dollars, but it's the overall request as well that had to be sorted through for this budget. And what was that request, again?
So, just to, just to clarify, the value of a mil is about forty-four million dollars within the general fund.
Okay.
So, the overall request for the general fund was seven hundred and ten million. What is being proposed in our future agenda item is six hundred and twenty-four point eight million. So, and I know we've talked a lot about constitutional officers. So, there are zero requests from constitutional officers being included in the budget, with the exception of the magistrate court clerk, magistrate court, and that was related to a legislative item.
Correct.
Anything else that's being included in as an increase for a constitutional officer is simply an adjustment that is based on spend history, but most importantly, a new roster. So, one of the things that keep in mind is we take that snapshot every year, and we adjust for any gain in positions or loss in positions.
And that's the fifteen point nine...
Exactly.
Million.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, the last thing, I know it was brought up, and so just for confirmation, regarding a expense from the sheriff's office, the twenty-five million dollars, that was a capital expense that did not come from the general fund, but was to be taken out of the, it's a specific fund for, that can be used for public safety?
Yeah, well, it was actually, we established a capital contingency fund that is dedicated to non-SPOS capital projects, and we established that using general fund dollars, and then we've also continued to feed that with interest earnings. So, where we built that over a period of time is because we know the requests that are funded annually through the general fund's capital adoption was twelve million for the last couple of years. Those requests far exceed that. So, as a part of that, we established a capital reserve contingency that was there available for projects that the board could consider. That item was specifically brought back as an agenda item, and we pulled nineteen million dollars out of that capital contingency and shifted it to a SPOS project, so this could be completed. Now, we did add, add a caveat that the board could choose to repay those funds. But obviously, that, when that time comes, that will be a board decision.
Right, and that reimbursement is come, it was identified to not be from a general fund account, but from the, I think it was...
Capital contingency, yes. Yes, outside of the general fund, that's correct.
Yes, okay.
It came from property management's...
We transferred it to the property management SPOS budget, because it's, it's an existing county facility for renovation, which is where it resides.
But it originated from the general fund?
Part of it did, that's correct, yes.
I'm going to give my statement.
Okay, um, thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any other comments? I'll share with the public, we spend about ten months each year creating our budget. This is not something that's done overnight. As soon as we approve it, there's about a month or so rest, and we tell people, "Let's get ready to assess what the next year's needs are." So, a lot of the discussion we're having here today, I truly do appreciate it. These should be inputs throughout that entire process so that we can truly have opportunity to flex any consideration in our millage. I will share that none of these decisions are made in a vacuum, but I understand if they're not clear to you, how frustrating that could be. And so, I do want to provide some clarity on some things. I'm not necessarily saying it's going to be agreement, but some clarity on some things. As was stated here today, throughout the fiscal year, we are making decisions that impact our budget and things that we need to consider for the next year. And so, Bill, I'm going to ask if you can bring up the slide that has impact items, so you can see how commissioners have voted in ways that we have to address in this year's budget. These are decisions that we make in the public in these meetings. And when you look at our agenda books, you'll notice an impact statement, and it will say, "This item will need to be included or considered in this upcoming budget." Are you pulling that up?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like for you to pull up the impact items for this year's budget.
So, you got to go to the budget presentation.
Because I can understand, just looking at numbers on a page truly don't make sense. But if you have an opportunity to see what's tied to those numbers, there may be some clarity. It's not, it's not this slide either, it's the one that's in the spreadsheet that's online.
I got you.
Yep. Cobb County FY twenty-four BLC items with twenty-five impact. And then we'll come back to this page.
Bear with me. We don't have it on the screen, but I have it in front of me if that, if, if you want to ask any questions on that.
I'll, it's my hope to walk through this.
It, would you like it on the screen?
I would like it on the screen. I think there's a sense of frivolity with the decisions that we're making, and so, I need for clarity's sake to be able to show the decisions that were made that are tying into this year's budget. So, the first matter that we have on here was a contract for body cameras. The second one is for us to continue our ongoing relationship with the state to provide training for police officers. The third matter is we had to renew our contract for bus operations. And that is a significant line item, as was identified, that we do have a significant amount of money going towards transit. There really is only one transit operator, and so, it's kind of a monopoly. And we are negotiating and trying to get that cost down, to maintain our existing service. The next one is for transit operations and a ma, and a maintenance contract with our service provider. The next item is to provide victim advocate positions through the DA's office. The next matter, again, goes to body cameras. The next matter is for us to provide a contract, or excuse me, a scheduling software for our seniors for food distribution. Our next matter is we are creating a recreation center in the Osborne Marietta community. They don't currently have one. And so, as we're developing and opening up that site, it does need to be manned. So, there are positions that are associated with that. In fact, we heard from the school board several years ago that kids were entering into the school to use as a rec center on weekend hours, because they didn't have that kind of amenity in that community. So, this has been overdue, as many of us, you know, we have proximate rec, recreation centers where we live. We have our next item, which is to support the All-Star game that's coming here next year. We also have positions that have been created in our probate court. And if anybody has gone through probate and understand the complexity of those operations over there and how it impacts real lives, positions have been added for that purpose. We've also updated our tech support system that's here in the county. And you can go ahead and scroll down, we have additional copiers. I can't, probably go towards the list. Okay. Excuse me, software licensing that was needed for the county. Also, we have a rapid deployment unit for emergency management agency that's on this list. Again, digital copiers. We have a lease agreement so that our police can be more proximate, or our public safety can be more proximate in the community. That's in the Dulc Road area, I believe. We also have additional equipment that's been purchased, more tech support through the state. An ambulance contract's been updated with Metro Ambulance for the county. We revised our stepping grade program so that we can incentivize our officers to stay with the county. We've increased their starting pay and, and increased their grades for promotion. We've also updated our lease agreement between the state and our, and our airport here at the county. And there's some maintenance costs associated with one of our properties, and I can't remember the East Oak Circle decision. That's the last one on the list. These are decisions that commissioners voted on during the year. I would concede that most of these decisions were made by the majority of this board, if not the whole board, even though there are a few items on here that I know, particularly with respect to victims advocates, that did not have the full support of the board. And there may be a few other items, but I would concede that most of these passed with the majority, if not a full vote of support from our commissioners that are here. So, that's about seventeen million dollars, I believe, for forty-two million dollar increase. So, now, we can go back to the presentation that you had. Excuse me, so these were sixteen and a half million dollars of agenda items that we approved over the year. Then, as was stated, we've updated our roster as we filled positions. Typically, when we have vacant positions, we budget them for fifty percent of their complete cost. So, we have some money in our budget, but we're not tying those dollars completely for positions that haven't been filled. So, as they're getting filled, we have to put the full amount towards the budget. And because of sixty-seven new full-time positions, and also increases in health insurance, and also public safety overtime, which is not insignificant, that also takes a significant amount of our dollars. And then, again, in general, just contract and insurance cost increases over the years. This is what's contributing to our increase. We had our departments submit several requests. I can't remember what the total dollar amount was for our county manager or bill, but we've had millions, if not tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars of requests from departments, hundreds of positions requested. We are funding three new positions, I believe, with this budget?
So, there are five new positions in total. Three of those were approved as part of the impact items for Osborne Community Center. And then, we have two additional positions, one in sustainability and one in water.
And one in water. Thank you. And then, there are a lot of other budget requests, again, we'll share from our constitutional officers, but also our departments that are going to go unmet. With Cobb County, it's very difficult to justify, not with Cobb, with anyone. It's very difficult to justify a tax increase. Nobody cares, for one, I personally don't. And forgive me if I was a little too candid about the impact to my own family with our home valuation, but it was a surprise. But as one of the speakers stated, you know, my family moved into a home about three or four years ago, and so, we're seeing the full impact of, of that move this year, and we're going to have to pay for it. There was no special accommodation made to me that wasn't made for anybody who was similarly situated. But there are some other macro elements that are contributing to the tax increase beyond the things that I shared today, and some of those are just purely economic. Supply and demand is a significant contributor. Whether or not people want to believe that or not is, is the truth. And, you know, in the heyday, when Cobb was growing in the seventies and eighties, we're probably building at about a third of that rate today. But yet, there continues to be continuing demand. And it does cause, it does cause the cost of homes to go up significantly. So, as Commissioner Richardson shared, there are other ways to be involved in this process. We need help, because when it comes to land use and zoning, those are very difficult days for us. But there is not an appetite to see any increase in density or housing. But yet, we know that if we're going to move out of this, we've got to build something somewhere to help decrease demand. There's also been some concern about renters. I'm very concerned about renters. I was a district commissioner for the area of Cobb, and Commissioner Sheffield is, that has the highest number of renters. She sees the impact that it has on her constituents every day. We are not insensitive or immune to these things. I lived in the Six Flags area, which probably has an acute level of moderate income than any other areas of the county. These are areas of the county that I saw every day living in my community for twenty-plus years. I could tell you, those communities need our support beyond just the military. There are many ways to support those communities and those who've been in continual need in this county. Again, those are issues that can be discussed outside of this meeting. I take a little bit of offense, because I don't see this concern, when I'm sitting there dealing with people in true need from people in this room. Cobb County supports homeownership, and this makes it difficult for our renters. Our tax structure supports homeownership. This is why you do have a homestead exemption, which is going to be providing a one hundred and seventeen million dollar credit onto the tax burden of this county. So, for those that may have rental properties, I know this is something that's difficult, and it's a cost that's passed on. This is a structural approach that many have taken in this county prior to us getting here, that says that we value and provide a tax incentive for people to own their property and own where they live. There has been discussion about consultants, and I think one of the ones that continue to come up are five million dollars spent for Deloitte. And that was out of American Rescue Plan Act dollars, not of general fund dollars. And when we wanted to spend the, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, we didn't do it in a bubble. We went to you, the public. We heard from three thousand of you that said, "You should spend our dollars in this way." And if that Cobb County's been lauded, and I just heard from a consultant from the federal government talking about our unique approach to ARP, and how that was used as a model for some other areas, and how we're utilizing a consultant. There are some communities that have not monitored their spending or who may have to end up paying some dollars back. Our consultant is helping to ensure that we're maximizing our dollars and are operating within the, within the legal construct of those funds that have been provided by the federal government, which is one-time funding, funding that can't be used to offset our recurring expenses. There are a lot of other things that have been stated here. We can go back and forth all night. All I'll do is share with you that a lot of time and effort has gone into the decisions made here tonight, and that these decisions did not happen in a vacuum. And with those line items that I shared, there's been very specific matters that we have to address tonight, which would prevent us from rolling back our millage to the rollback rate. But what we do is we try to make sure that Cobb County does operate in its general spirit of operating efficiently and still effectively, which allows us to have some of that... of operating efficiently and still effectively, which allows us to have some of that stats that the gentleman from the Realtors Association did share, how we are still in the metro area and maintaining the lowest millage and lowest sales tax rate, lowest water rates here in Cobb County. I want to thank our employees because if they're done on anybody's backs, the significant wins that we have here in Cobb with the resources that we have are really done on their backs as they try to do their best to serve you with the limited dollars that they have and limited resources. It was shared in one of our hearings that our departments operate generally with one-third of the resources that our neighboring counties do. But yet, Cobb County is known for providing stellar service still that's done through real people who are committed to serving you every day, and we'd love to do it for free. But you and I both know it doesn't operate like that. With that, Bill, I want to thank you. I want to thank your team for doing your best in providing us information so that I could propose a budget that reflects the decisions that we've made over the last year, and that reflects the updated roster, that reflects the overtime that's needed in public safety, that reflects the merit that our employees are due for the work that they do to provide stellar service to the citizens who are here. And also, I appreciate the budget in enabling us to make good on our contracts that are already existing. This is where the increase is going. So with that, Bill, I ask that you help take us to our next agenda item.
Very good. Thank you, Chairwoman. Our next agenda item is to adopt a resolution setting the 2024 millage rates for Cobb County General Fund, Fire Fund, Bond Fund/Debt Service Fund, the Cumberland Special Service District Two Fund, and the Six Flags Special Service District Fund. Those millage rates are as follows: the General Fund at 8.46 mils, the Fire Fund at 2.99 mils, the Bond Fund/Debt Service Fund at zero mils, the Cumberland Special Service District Two is at 2.45 mils, and the Six Flags Special Service District is at 3.5 mils. So with that, I do ask the board to adopt the resolution that sets the 2024 millage rates for the Cobb County General Fund, the Fire Fund, the Bond Fund, the Cumberland Special Service District Two Fund, the Six Flags Special Service District Fund, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
I'd like the clerk to record my statement in reference to the civil action case that is found on page 123 of the current budget, or current agenda. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Broom?
I've already submitted mine.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition. Okay, we'll now go on to our next agenda item.
Chairwoman, it's my understanding that we are going to skip five and move into six and come back to five at a later time tonight.
Okay.
So with that, we are going to conduct our third public hearing on the 2025 proposed budget, and I have a brief presentation to walk through before I ask the board to open the public hearing.
Thank you. Similar to the last hearing, we have another public hearing to address the budget. Speakers are enabled to come and address the Board of Commissioners for a total of three minutes. Again, we'll take an unlimited number of speakers. The only limitation you have beyond time is to narrow your comments to the budget.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So with that, we have, on the first slide, we have a summary of all of our governmental funds, the 24 adopted amount, as well as the 25 requested amount, and then we have the 25 proposed amount. And really, walking through this list, obviously, the two biggest increases that you'll see is the Cobb County's General Fund at a $41.3 million increase and the county's Fire Fund at 14.7. And we're going to touch on those a little bit in a few minutes, or in a few minutes. I will go ahead and just get a brief update on the Fire Fund. The Fire Fund is driven by property taxes, and we spent some time on that, talking about how this does not have a homestead exemption. They had significant increases as relate for operation, and they have capital increases, capital needs that will be funded out of the Fire Fund. Everything is funded out of the Fire Fund. There is a few exceptions to that. We have a few fires lost projects, but primarily, 100% of the fire operations are funded out of this fund with basically one revenue source, which is property taxes. And then, moving down the list, as we touch on, the next biggest one that we'll see is the Claims Fund. This is where we capture our self-funded insurance, which is our casualty liability insurance, our health insurance for employees and retirees, as well as any claims the county has paid. And then, we also have workers' comp in there as well. So that is simply an increase based on the cost of policies that drive that, as well as the claims that the county has incurred as we continue to function as a self-funded insurance policy. Now, we do have some policies out there for properties, specifically some cybersecurity and general access and things like that. All of the policies have increased each year of the past several years, so we are seeing a little bit of uptick in the Claims Fund as a result of the claims and policy increases. Then, the other one I do want to touch on in this slide is the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. This is simply based on collection of revenue and how it is distributed. Now, the positive with this is we do share this revenue with the Cobb Galleria Authority. The money that the county maintains is used to pay for bonds, both the Performing Arts Center, and then the remainder is transferred into the General Fund to help offset any cost of the stadium bonds. And that is definitely part of our presentation that we provide annually on the Braves update. So as this continues to grow, it does reduce the General Fund impact for the stadium bonds that's outstanding. There's very minimal increases on the rest of this, but the overall governmental increase is 63.7 million. Any questions on this slide before I move to the business time?
Not seeing any.
Very good. Okay, so our other type of funds that we have as business types, these are going to consist of our water, our transit, our golf course, and our sustainability, waste, and beautification funds. The largest of these increases does come with transit. I know we spent some time on that in previous meetings as well as tonight. The majority of this increase is simply due to the new contract that was put in place at the end of last year. It does have a very significant impact. That $7.2 million increase, as you shared in the impact items, some of that is being offset by grants and local match dollars. So 2.2 million of that increase is a hit on the General Fund. So I do want to remind you that that General Fund does subsidize this, subsidize this. There is some small passenger fare revenue, and then the remainder is funded through grants and local match. And then, moving on to the water fund, this is a $5.2 million increase, and this is primarily the result of two items. It's water purchases that we buy from the Water Authority. They continue to have rate increases annually, as well as the increased cost for chemicals and sludge handling. That is driving that increase. There is one new position in the water fund and one new position in the Sustainability, Waste, and Beautification Fund. So the overall increase to the county is $76.4 million. Now, I do want to provide some breakdown of the General Fund, and I know we've kind of touched on this slide, but just want to hit it one more time, and then we have a follow-up slide after this. Okay, as you can walk through this, you can see, as the Chairwoman and the board have stated, 16 and a half million dollars of $41.3 million is simply agenda items that were approved during the year that have a budgetary impact. The other side of that coin is we have an updated employee roster. During the budget cycle, we take a snapshot of the current employee roster each April. That had an increase of $20.9 million. Now, that consists of a couple of things. One, we have been successful in filling positions based on some of the decisions the board has made with class and pay studies, enhanced benefits, a reduced vesting period of time. So some of those have proven very successful. The areas that we continue to struggle, as the board is well aware, is within public safety. That continues to be a vacancy challenge, but they did address that in the summer with the enhancements to the step and grade proposal. So hopefully, next year, we can come back and say that that was success, and we saw public safety begin to fill some of those vacancies. As a result of those vacancies, we are seeing an increase in public safety overtime. Obviously, we have less staff, they have to have the same amount of work, overtime continues to grow. So that is something that we had to address this year that has not been addressed for several years. We have made enhancements to public safety throughout that period of time with pay increases, step and grade adjustments, and things of that nature. So there's a couple of factors here. Pay, as well as the vacancies, created some challenges here, so public safety overtime had to be addressed. And just like every other year that we'll get up here, you'll always have an increase to the pension costs, and you'll always have an increase to the healthcare costs. Now, someday, 21 years from now, we could say you won't have an increase to the pension costs, but we still have 21 more years to go on that. So I don't think I will be here then, so I just want to put that out there. 21 years, and we will see a significant reduction in the pension costs. That will be, ideally, will be self-funded or 100% funded at that time. So just to give you a little breakdown, between the impact items and the roster, that totals 37.4 million, or 90.5% of the overall increase in the General Fund. That leaves 3.9 million. That 3.9 million went to increase in existing contracts and insurance. That's where that dollars went. So again, no new programs, and there are three new positions being added, but they are covered within the impact items for parks. All right, and then just lastly, on this breakout, let's show you a little bit differently, same information. General Fund went up $41.3 million. You can see where the dollars went. So we have 61.76% of this increase went to public safety. Now, I know a lot of times we discuss public safety as being more than police, sheriff, fire, 911. It includes the courts as well. So if you add public safety and judicial, that totals 29.7 million, or 71.9% of the overall increase. And we've shared with you on the transportation increases, 2.2 million of that 5 million is due to the operator service contract for transit, the increase in subsidy. There is some capital that is being awarded to transit for a satellite location, and the rest is simply a roster update. And then, as we move into judicial, this is all primarily roster update with the exception of one. Magistrate Court had a $984,000 increase, but that was legislatively driven. Okay, any questions on this slide? Okay, then we're going to hit our famous date slide one more time, just to remind everybody of the key dates. Tonight is the final night of budget hearing and then ideally, budget adoption. We have complied with Georgia law and state law as we've advertised and held additional public hearings for this. We do not require three, but we did hold three to make sure they coincided with the millage public hearings, so that way citizens would have the opportunity to speak on both each of those meetings. So with that, Chairwoman, I do ask, if there's no questions from the board, that you open the public hearing on the 2025 proposed budget?
Thank you, Bill. I believe we have one question.
Yes.
Yeah, just one. And I know you kind of answered, you tried to answer before, but because we're on the budget, really just want to key into it. So 624 is what came out as the request that is being proposed, but I do want everyone to know what was total requested by all the departments coming together.
Absolutely.
To know what that was.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. So that is going to be right here. The total of all funds, you'll see the requested for 25 was $1,352 million, and the amount that's being proposed is $1,276 million.
Excellent. And then, there was also a number of positions that was associated with that number. Do you have that offhand?
Yes, there was over 380 positions requested in total, and we are funding five.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you advance, sorry, go ahead. Can you advance to the next slide?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, one more, I think.
Very good.
Okay. So for public safety, is that solely for salary and fringe?
No.
Or is it for other, would that include any projects?
So that would be impact items and roster update, and that is it.
Okay.
So that, there is no additional things in here that were not part of the roster update or an impact item. That covers any of these categories.
Okay. And what are some of the impact items in public safety?
One of the biggest items that we saw was the body cams and then the step and grade proposal. Those are the two largest. Now, the other part of that, that I will, let me back up on that because technically, overtime is not an impact item, but it is part of our roster update based on spend history due to vacancies. So just want to be clear that that overtime is definitely included in that number. And just so you know, within that number for public safety in the General Fund, that's $5 million for overtime.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't have a question, but just want to share that I know our departments lose faith in us. They lose faith in the five of us when our directive is to them to tell us only the things that you need, not the things that you want, the things that you need to operate. And they come back with what looks to be about $100 million of requests and 300 positions that we only fund five. They don't believe that we care about the stress and the strain in their organization and on their people to continue to provide the level of service that they believe you deserve. And we tell them, "We are being mindful of you." And they're telling us they are being mindful of you, too, in their requests. So this is a very difficult process because they go through the hard work of paring down not their wants, but their needs to us. And every year, they go unaddressed, every year. So this is the challenge for us. Every year, when we come and ask you to keep our millage rate flat, because we know for us to meet what they perceive our needs would require for us to increase the millage. And that's what Chairman Boyes did in 2018, just to keep us afloat, which, as I've stated multiple times, it wasn't even enough. And that action was met with vitriol. But I think our organization would have just been in a tailspin in trying to figure out how we serve you with the limited resources that you give or that we give them. And so, as we go into this hearing, again, I feel obligated to talk to our employees and let them know that I hear you, and that part of the reason I'm as stalwart as I am when I come into these hearings is because I've been here for 12 years to see not only when their needs were unmet, but when we didn't give them merit every year. I've been here when I believe over a period of 10 years, they received raises in only three of those years. And we still kept telling them to serve Cobb with the best. That is part of our stress and strain. That is part of mine, but why I sit here with a conviction, knowing that at the end of the day, we are doing our best to serve you.
And with that, I'll go ahead and open up our public hearing to the first speaker.
Hello again, Pamela Reardon. Good filibuster. We lost a lot of people from that. Okay, you know, "I want, I want, I want." I get that part. 380 positions. I think this county is doing really well. And I don't know where those 380 positions are going to go, but I don't believe that for one minute. So, you know, cry me the tears, whatever. So I just want to let you know that you have to look at this process, and you have to start now, not at the end, because the U.S. existing home sales has dropped to one of the slowest paces since 2010. 2010, do you know what that means? That is going to be the forerunner of hard times to come, and that is an indication, an indicator. So we do have to start looking at this. I know for a fact that the Sheriff's Department is run inefficiently. They are overtime. That is the expense that we are funding because the guy doesn't know how to budget and manage his people. And the jails take, I don't know, 10 times longer to process somebody. I'm in a door knocking, and I even run into the people who are telling me this, and I'm not making it up. So you have to go to them, and you have to get them under control because it's not the police, it's not the fire, it's the Sheriff's Department. That is the big problem, and we have to look at the And we have to look at the inefficiencies and the way that some of the departments are run. I won't go into the other ones, I'll let other people talk. Thanks.
I'm still Kathy Slough, 20-year homeowner, Cobb County, Marietta, Georgia. I'm staying, even though I need to get home to my dog, so I can split the medicine that I would normally give the full tablet to, I have to split it four ways. I'm gonna go home and eat macaroni and cheese, or spaghetti, that I've eaten for several days. I've been in your position, I was a 14-year board member, Board of Directors on my condo complex as Secretary and Treasurer of a $1,250,000 budget. I was on food stamps growing up. I came down here with a thousand dollars. I'm still on my budget from several years ago. I appreciate some of you commissioners speaking out, asking questions, 'cause I think some of you get it. I am for public safety. Here's how I see we could cut things. No consultants. I saw a golf course up there, we don't really need a golf course, there might be some golf people in here. We don't need those charities you donate to. We don't need the buses that sit empty, I see maybe one or two people on there. So, that would probably take care of it. And we have the horses now, as some of you know, I'm an animal lover, so we must take care of those. But we don't need, given to the charities, we don't need given to the buses, we can skip the golf courses. This is a green issue, it's a money issue. It's not Democrat, Republican, Libertarian undecided. It takes common sense, not courage. I'm here now, I haven't seen my dog since this morning, but I'm here for the neighbor, again, that cannot be here, and for the renter that's making a lot of money at $2.13 an hour. My projected Social Security cost of living increase next year will be 2.6%. I'm still driving my 1999 Toyota Camry with 236,000 miles. Sure, I would love a Mercedes, but it's not going to happen. Thank you for your time, please listen to us, cut the budget, and roll back to the neutral rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Strevins, and I would like to say, my husband was in sales for many years with the government. And one of the things he commented about frequently was about the budgets, and how everybody wanted to keep their budget, whether they needed it or not. So they would, they would pad it big time. So I, I don't know if I, I believe that story about how you go to them and all that sacrifice and stuff, 'cause I've heard a very different, very different story. And perhaps it's time for you to retire, if it's so tough. You know, that's a consideration. But you're really the people, you're here to serve the people, and when you take the oath, it's, it's for the, for the people. And when you don't, when you don't follow the Constitution and do what is lawful, it's male administration, and you are, you don't have immunity. You don't have immunity, so just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, not all at once.
Hi, I'm Stillu Alicia Adams, and Commissioner Cupid, I just wanna applaud you, Chairwoman, for such a fantastic State of the County address. It was a masterfully written speech. The only problem was it wasn't accurate, because you stated that we had the lowest millage rate, and that's true, but we haven't, we haven't equalized the budget to offset the increases in home valuations in years, since, actually, since before the tax increase of 2018. So it was a bit disingenuous, we needed more information in order for all of us to really understand exactly how the State of the County is. But you also boasted about how we have the lowest water rate, but you didn't disclose to them that you really wanted to do a stormwater fee, and you didn't disclose that there's also an anticipated increase in rates, which, I've forgotten her name, the director, she and I spoke about it, and she said that yes, there was, there's a planned increase. So, a little bit disingenuous on that, but we talk about we don't have place in the budget to cut? Yeah, we do. Yeah. And what you're expecting us to do is to cut our bare bones budget down to a little bit of marrow. And, and quite frankly, we've already discussed that the, the busing system that we have the transit, it's inefficient and ineffective, it's not well-run. There are many lines, and we see it a lot, that are empty. There are some that are relatively full, moderately full, I know Number 10 does. But what are we doing increasing by even 5 million dollars, let alone 7, 8 million dollars for transit? I, I don't understand that. We, we can't spend more money if it's not efficient and effective already. We're not gonna throw bad money, or good money to bad, and that's what we're doing right now. This is not Never Neverland, you're not Robin Hood, and we're not dishonest people. We are tax-paying lover citizens of Cobb County, and we are taxed to the max. Stop decabinating us, stop fultonizing us, we're Cobb County, we want our middle-class existence, we don't wanna be, we don't want our county to look so good, but we can't keep our houses up, we can't pay our bills. And that's what many people are talking about, and that includes me as a single mom, too. So I implore you, let's stop this, stop this endless, our money is not your money. So stop acting like you're, my bank account is your bank account. Let's live modestly, try, live by a budget, your family does, we need you to budget for us, too. So, thank you.
You know, all the things that you've described about Cobb County, that's what people love about Cobb County. We love the low property taxes, we love the low water bills, as you say, we love the, you know, the low meal, and that's one of the reasons a lot of people came to Cobb County. They came to Cobb County, number one, for the low taxes, and number two, for the suburban areas, because a lot of people moved here, wanting to get away from the city. As a matter of fact, the subdivision that you live in, that's how that subdivision came to creation, because a lot of the people came from Atlanta that wanted that suburban atmosphere, so they moved over into Cobb County, just to get that. But people are leaving here. I had a friend last week who told me they sold their home. They were up, they were up off of Stylesboro Road, they moved to Cartisville, Bartow County. I mean, people are leaving Cobb, and I don't know if you guys have noticed, but they're leaving Cobb in massive numbers. Lots of people going to the borderline of Alabama, some people going into Alabama, but they're just fleeing Cobb. And I don't want Cobb to be like Clayton County was once upon a time, when I think the airlines, one of the major airlines closed, and everybody left Cobb, I mean, left Clayton County. And we saw what Clayton County became, but they're on their way back, they've got a good economic development team, and they're building themselves back up. But if you guys continue with these tax increases for Cobb County, that's exactly what's gonna happen to Cobb, because people are gonna find other alternatives, and they're gonna leave. And I'm so glad that you were able to use my analogies from last week, last meeting, about a want and a need, because there's a big difference. And that's what I had to teach both my sons. You may want it, but do you need it? So my suggestion to you guys is, maybe at next year's budget, maybe you wanna call some of the taxpayers in, and let us sit down with you, and you explain to us, we're spending this on this, and this on this, because you can put whatever you wanna put up on the screen, but as the people have said, we don't trust you. But if we can see the raw numbers ourselves, and we can see what you plug in, what you take out, then maybe you can bring some, you know, some belief back to Cobb and into your role, if it so happens you go back into your seat again. I mean, November is approaching fast, and people have some tough decisions that they have.
Excuse me, maybe your time, your time is up?
We'll take our next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Maria Cooper. I, in looking at the, at the different items of the slides for the budget, why do we have, why are we paying for a golf course? That's a want, that's not a need, okay? How many millions of dollars could you save on that? If you eliminated that? Transportation, the buses, I know you guys have seen the data, every year it loses money, every year it loses money, every year it loses ridership. Why are you guys not paying attention to that? Why are we dumping more money into that? You could save millions there. What is community development? What is that? That sounds fishy to me. Transfers out, what is transfers out? What does that mean? What does that mean? And lastly, personnel. There is always extra people in every single department that could be gotten rid of. I know that we are not, you guys make it sound like we're at the bare minimum, no. This is government, government's always bloated. So I don't believe what you guys are saying about personnel. Y'all really, you need, you should make every department slim down. And that lady said, the, there's, about the budget, there's two ways to do budgets, and government does budget the wrong way, which is, okay, this department gets 25 million for the year, and if they're effective and efficient and don't spend up to the 25 million, then for the next year, whoever the powers are be, that be, will reduce their amount, their budget. And so to prevent that from happening, they, they do all kinds of finagling and bogus stuff, so that they can spend their 25 million, so that the powers that be will give them 25 million for the next year. That's the typical way that budgets get done in the government, which is the wrong way to do it. People who are effective and efficient are not rewarded. They're penalized. So, yeah.
Ma'am, sorry, your time's up.
Hillary, somehow magically each year, the proposed need just happens to be exactly what the real estate market will bring us. Isn't that special, how that works? This is just managing your tax increase to what you can bring in. And you, basically what you've done tonight here is, Chair Cupid, and with this presentation and all, is you've told the people what they can afford, that's what you've done, you told the people what they can afford, you told the people what we have to give the county, and all, and you didn't listen to the people who are struggling out there, and are telling you that they can't bear anymore. And times are gonna get worse, and things are gonna get worse, and people are gonna lose the roof over the head because of you're not listening. You can't tax us into prosperity, and I, I can tell you, the very first thing you should cut is this $2 million slush fund you have for the Board of Commissioners. You should cut that back, because you're, you, you should do without, because the people are doing without. You did a good job of, of just talking over us tonight, telling us about recreation centers and things like that. Boy, and I, I was, you're rattling off these things, and I'm just thinking about, how many things really did matter to the people out here who are worried about buying food and breaking pills in half and all of that? Not many of those things. And then you tell us, well, we're gonna go ahead and do this increase, because it, it wouldn't be much of a reduction, anyway, it wouldn't, it really wouldn't matter, and all. You're just basically just not willing to cut, you're not willing, and you're lecturing us and shaming us about, you know, the poor county employees and all, but what about the poor people out there? That's who should matter to you.
We'll take our next speaker.
Good evening, I'm Sebastian Bonner, 36-year resident of Cobb County, born and raised. I wanted to say a couple things. I heard the young ladies speak about recreation centers. Me, as a black kid in Cobb County, about 20 years ago, that's all I knew, that's all I needed, was a recreation center that I could go to that was a safe place. Because unlike a lot of people, my parents were not rich, they weren't poor, but we were not financially to the place where a single black mother with four kids could afford daycare. So those recreation centers that you guys speak of, that are not needed, are very much so needed. I also feel like it's becoming a bit personal, when I hear people approaching this commission as it relates to public safety. Again, as a little black boy in Cobb County, public safety is needed, in every form of it. I believe that our share that we currently have, has done an amazing job at building a level of trust that a black man in Cobb County needs to have, with the Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, the Public Safety Departments, even the Fire Department. And until you've experienced the trauma that most of us as African-American- that most of us as African-American residents of Cobb County have done for so many years, then I think that you may need to revisit it. Sit back, ask your black friends or ask people in your neighborhood or ask these other people that can give you real insight of what it is to be at Cobb County Jail, what it is to be at any jail, um, what it is to feel like when you see those police lights hit your, hit your rearview mirror at nine o'clock in the afternoon because you made an illegal, uh, illegal right turn. But I believe that our public safety department in Cobb County, because they've been able to get the resources and they're trying to foster relationships with people like me, I believe that they need those increases. I believe that they rightfully deserve the staffing, the overtime that they have been. I still think th- they've been getting, but I think that they need more. And again, I just, I, I really, I was watching, I raced over here because I wanted to say that I've heard a lot of the negative for a budget increase that is minute.
I'm sorry, your time's up. Your time is up.
Thank you. There are any other speakers? Not hearing any, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Bill, as you approach any commissioners, if you have any questions or comments, I would ask that you direct them to Bill at this time. Why don't I start with Commissioner Gamble? We'll just walk down because I saw a hand, but I don't know whose hand I saw.
Bill, just to confirm again, um, we have budgeted for merit increases for the employees.
That's correct.
We have budgeted a step increase for, or sworn public safety officers. We have not budgeted a COLA.
That is correct.
And the, the COLA is pretty much what helps keep us up with, not only inflation, but market rate. And, um, my understanding, we have about 300 public safety officers that are not going to get a step because of, because of the way the step was structured. And so the only way that they would get an increase would be through a COLA.
So I, I do not have those numbers in front of me, but I can tell you that with the new stepping grade proposal, um, there are, there will be a number of officers who do not receive an increase this March because they're currently above the step that's being proposed. Um, those all vary based on the individual officer and where they fall. The idea is that in, I know, and I don't want to speak for Director Register, but the idea is that we will come back each year and revisit that to see if an adjustment can be made. So we made one this July. So we have a pay increase, first pay period of July for anybody who was eligible adjusting the salary ranges and also adjusting the plan up to 25 years. Then you'll have the traditional step in March as we've had each of the previous year. Anybody who has a proficient performance rating and meets that eligible criteria would be entitled to a step. But if you're above that step, you will hold flat. So one of the things that the board took very good caution on is no one received a reduction. Even if you're above the step, you are held there until you are eligible. Now, you can be eligible for a couple of reasons. One, when that step is, allows you to move. Or two, if the board comes back and makes future pay scale adjustments or COLAs, depending on how you want to adjust that. But that's kind of the idea is the COLA moves the beginning grade all the way to the top. So our current entry level salary for public safety is 54. If the COLA would move that entry level, obviously it has to run through the entire ranks. So, and also one of the things to keep in mind, this is modeled very similar to the school board, is in the first 10 years, you should get a step. After that, it becomes every other year. But in our previous plan, you capped out at 16 years. Now we have extended it to 25, which I believe Director Register said that that is kind of more in line with a public safety career. And that, that was kind of the thought process there. They felt 16 was not sufficient enough. And I think obviously the board agreed.
And then, um, one of the speakers brought up the golf course. And I believe that's Cobblestone.
It is. So it's actually Cobblestone and the Fox Creek and Legacy courses. Um, we have a management company that runs those. No taxpayer dollars go to fund those. Those are, live off the revenues. And since the pandemic, those have performed so well that, that we've actually been able to give money back to the general fund each year. They've been small amounts, but every time we can hit that cap and send some money back to the general fund, we do that. Um, so those have been a big win since, uh, the pandemic and continue to perform very well. So those are profitable courses. And again, no tax dollars go to fund those courses.
And so just to help educate our public, why do we have that as a separate line item shown on your budget?
Absolutely. So it is, it is an enterprise fund. So it is treated like a business. So there's no taxes that can go into that fund. It is simply based on user fees. So that's how enterprise funds are created, is we have that as a kind of a standalone. Is there supposed to be carried by user fees themselves? Or that should be their primary source of revenue? So we do not want to blend that with the general fund because it is truly self-funded through user fees.
And so that, this is kind of going to flow right into transfers. I know we, people were asking about why do we have the line item for transfer? And I think this is kind of a good example of how we can explain why you have the transfer line.
Yes. So, and that, transfers are absolutely necessary for a couple of reasons. Some funds are legally required to be a standalone fund and not within the general fund. For example, I'm going to use kind of the Braves stadium bond situation as a good example. Now, we have a variety of sources of revenues that are transferred out of their fund into the general fund to cover that debt service. That debt service expense has to live in the general fund because there's no dedicated revenues. Now, the board has obligated revenues to go there, but legally, there's no dedicated revenues other than property taxes. So, but the board, when they issued those bonds, we said, we are going to fund it with A, B, and C. So those are going to be the Cumberland Special Service District 1, Cumberland Special Service District 2, all which generate money in their own fund. Those funds are then transferred into the general fund to cover that debt service. Now, we also have things going the other way. Um, transfers can range in all shapes and sizes. They could be a way that we fund long-term capital projects. Um, we, for example, we could pay that over a period of time because maybe we have a project that is well north of the $12 million that we fund in the general fund annually. And we said, okay, well, it's going to cost us $20 million. In several years, we can take little bites out of that apple and send it over and build that so the project can be completed. We've done that with some of our larger, uh, larger projects, IT projects specifically. And then we also use that to fund IT projects for subscription, subscription costs and then GIS and a variety of other things, PC replacements. So that, another example with that is most county employees have a computer. Now, they, everybody pays into the capital projects fund for their computer replacement. So if I'm a general fund employee, for my computer to be replaced, we pay into the capital projects fund. And when my cycle happens, that money's used. If I'm a fire employee, they pay in. So it's making sure we cover the costs where the, where the expense truly lies. And that way, we don't have all these weird individual lines scattered throughout. We can simply say, everybody who has these expenses will contribute to those, to the overall cost. I hope that helped.
I, I think you answered the questions that I heard come up from our comments.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, and just for the transfers, I know you brought up the Braves example. I think it is actually a really great example. I know I leverage that one a lot because it, because of the different sources of funds that put that together. Um, the one thing I just want to key in, as you mentioned, the special services district. So I do want to make sure the public understands what that means as well. When we say like the Cumberland Special Service District, that's actually a separate board that taxes their own commercial properties within a specific area. Um, that is done separately from our board, even though we're ratifying their, their rate or their mileage that they then transfer that amount that they've earned into our general fund so that the money can then be transferred to the expense related to what they're covering.
So the, the Cumberland Special Service District is controlled by our board. Um, but to your point, I think what you're referring to is going to be more of the Six Flags Special Service District. They have the South Cobb Development Authority plays a big piece in that. So it's an intergovernmental agreement with us and them that they have, uh, an active role in how we, because that was initially, initially designed as a redevelopment. And I think one of our biggest expenses, we purchased a property to have it be redeveloped. And that's kind of the active role they play. The Cumberland Special Service District does comprise of commercial properties only. And obviously a big part of that, especially for the Special Service District 1, which collects the $3 room night, that is the big vocal component of that is obviously hotel owners because they are the one collecting that fee and want to have a say in that. And the board has heard in the past from them how they envision those dollars being spent. And you did make adjustments based on that input.
And I appreciate that correction. Thank you. Um, and then the other thing, um, the, another question that came up was around what is community development? I know that was more specific to the $1 million that was in the budget. I do want to answer the what is community development, but also the $1 million, what that's dedicated to. I believe that was tied to the permitting process improvements. Okay.
That's correct.
Um, and then the other thing, before you get it, because that's, I know that's a much longer answer.
Sure.
Just want to indicate for everybody in the audience as well. Two years ago, we did have each department, um, present to this board during work session over several weeks. It is lengthy. They are, it is hours worth of content. But each department actually gave a presentation on their efficiencies, their inefficiencies, their needs, where those, um, hangups were. The one I tend to point to a lot was the chief medical officer. It was the, I would say, the most dramatic change from some of the decisions that the board took two years ago in that biennial. Um, but if you are ever bored, um, or if you just want a more summarized version, happy to talk to you about any of those. But if you are ever bored, those videos are available to watch and hear exactly what each department is saying they are facing. So you don't have to hear it from us because we're hearing it directly from those departments as well. And it'll contextualize some of the challenges, um, that they are facing within those departments and what it is that we're trying to balance between the needs, the wants, and, um, you know, trying to meet the needs of what, what the community is asking for. Uh, so that, I did just want to mention that those videos are available. So back to community development. Take it away, Bill.
Okay, so community development is an agency within Cobb County. Um, they comprise of several functions. And I apologize if I miss any, so I'm going to try to do my best to hit them all. We have code enforcement, we have planning, we have zoning, we have occupation tax, which is our business license division, code enforcement. So there's a lot of functions that live within community development. See it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
But that caveat, I may miss one, so please fill in the blanks.
Right, so commute, yeah, COM Dev does cover a lot of span. And there are certain, certain functions, certain services they offer that actually pay for themselves that are outside of the general fund as well. Um, I, I don't have to go into that detail, but I do want to now, you know, semicolon on that. The $1 million permitting improvements, perhaps you can just shed some light on that part of the budget.
Absolutely. So that was a, a challenge identified by the board, uh, last year. And we were having some difficulties, uh, time delays in our plan review and permitting processes. Um, the board asked, uh, our director to work with other directors, uh, because there's, it's not just community development. It involves DOT, water, fire. So they all got together and came up with a plan of how they can improve that, improve that. And I think Director Jessica Gwynn provided the board a really good update at the BOC retreat and how much they were able to reduce that time. It was, I want to say up to several weeks. And I believe, I don't want to misquote her, but I believe she got it to like 10 days is kind of where they were hovering. So we did see significant improvements in that area, which is what that $1 million was geared for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I, I don't think any of the, us on this board, in fact, I know all the public safety stepping grade, we've always supported by the, maybe one of the few five O votes, but that, that was always public safety first. And the past three years, the increases were to get rid of compression. And now that we've extended the stepping grade from the 16-point method, or however you want to say it, to 25, that's the reason for this increase. Um, and it is needed. And we are still short officers and firefighters. Um, and, but we're, we're really working hard on retention and recruiting with the new, um, rates and salaries. So, um, the new positions for parks and rec, for the Osborne Rec Center. The rec center is a SPOSS project. It was built with SPOSS dollars. But once it's finished, you have to man it and staff it. Um, and we all approved that, um, as an agenda item, which is on the impact list. We all agreed to that. So that's an approved, um, in the budget for this year too, which is needed. The water, um, the employee for the water engineer for, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Um, water's a separate fund. So, and the transfer, the water transfer, I'm, I'm very appreciative that that is going down to five. Um, that was a process started back in 2013. And in 2016, when we rolled back the mileage to match the increase in the digest, the following year, the, um, water transfer went back up to 10%. So we started all over again in 2018 to re, to reduce it from 10. Um, in 2021, it stayed at eight for two years. Um, but it has been reduced by 1% each year since. So I'm glad that that stayed in the budget. Um, we're chipping away at that, but hopefully eventually it will be, it'll stay in water where it's needed the most. So, um, it's, you know, there, we do need to work on our process to, to see where, what needs, what's not efficient or, um, you know. Kimberly, Kimberly White, our key, key beautiful director, who has another title now on sustainability. I know there's a position on here for her. She does an excellent job and I have no complaints on her, but I don't think that the position is, is essential or, um, needed at this time.
Hey, Bill. Um, ju- just a few things. We discussed public safety quite a bit. And we talked about retention and recruiting. And we know and realize that this is a problem, not just with Cobb, but across the metro area. Currently Cobb has one of, well, I don't want to say one of the lowest salary offerings for police officers, but it has been communicated that we're not very competitive.
Yes.
So with our starting salaries with police, can you provide clarification or insight on whether or not that number includes fringe?
The, the 54,000 starting is simply base pay. So that would be somebody who is going to join our police department with a high school education. Because as, as you have additional education and certifications, there's some incentives there as well. So that is a, somebody walking in fresh off the street and that is simply salary. So once you add in fringe, now everybody's fringe is different. But we offer, obviously offer full medical. And then you, that value is based on what you select. Obviously, uh, medical for an individual versus a family has a different price tag, but that is available to each and every employee. A retirement package is available as well. And then, uh, we also do, um, there's several other, like I said, there's, um, education incentives, shift differential and a variety of other things that would increase that 54,000.
Okay, okay, thanks. And if you would also address the $2 million contingency that was mentioned earlier, if you can just share with the public what that is.
So I, I believe, and I don't want to speak for the individual, the contingency that I'm aware of that we'd be talking about would be the $200,000 contingency that each of the board members have for their district. So that was originally a BOC contingency at $1 million. It was decided last year for the first time to break that up into five buckets. So each commissioner and the chair could address things within their district or countywide. And that was kind of the, the thought process. And you all have taken different approaches and chosen different projects or different initiatives to use those dollars for. So that, that is the only thing I'm aware of. Now, we do have other contingencies, but I think the chair did address one of the ones that we added for this year that is new, is related to the All-Star game. That is primarily. That is primarily for public safety, because we know we're going to have some public safety needs, as well as possibly some DOT needs and other needs that will be addressed for the All-Star game. So that is added in there for 2025. That will not be there in 2026. That is a one-time contingency, and then that would go away in a future year.
Okay. So what are some projects that you, that you received or interest from the commissioners regarding their contingency?
Ooh.
Do you recall off the top of your head?
I.
Or I can just share with my contingency.
If you do that, I can pull up the other one.
Okay. That includes an expansion of a library in my district, and I know that there have been other significant projects and entrance from constituents. It's not that the commissioners are spending this personally on themselves, it's still going into the community.
Yes.
And addressing needs of the constituents.
Yes, and as you said, I mean, we have everything from animal services, project spay and neuter program, bindings renovation, public safety equipment, capital improvements in North Cobb Senior Center, kennels for our canines, PD sound meters, there's extensive list, Tim Lee Senior Center chairs, and then we have, so that looks like a lot of the ones we've addressed. And that doesn't even include the additional, the million that you have for capital. So that is just that 200K that each of you have as BOC contingency. And then obviously, last year, we awarded each of you a million dollars to address capital needs in addition to that. Now, if you'd like that list, I do have some of those as well. But again, those are district-specific projects where commissioners have chosen to put their monies, and that could be anything from pickleball courts to signage for community development. There's a long list, bindings, library renovation, so that is quite extensive. But again, that is.
Sure.
Going to fund projects and initiatives.
Right. Which essentially serves the constituent, I guess.
Absolutely.
That's the point that I make.
And I, having been involved in several of those conversations, a lot of those are conversations between the commissioner or the chair and that department. So they may bring you a need, and this is dollars that you have available to help address a need that was not included in the budget process.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was all that I had here. I think that leads in well to this conversation of needs and wants and how that's in the eye of the beholder. But each of us have been elected to serve a very diverse constituency, and with all of us working together, we have opportunity in partnership with our staff to meet the needs of our citizens. I truly appreciate the last citizen that came and spoke to articulate what some people consider, again, a want, and he shared how integral some of the services that we provide in our county are to his family and have been to his childhood. And there are many others who don't come to these meetings, who may not have had the chance to race here, who benefit from the services that we provide that help to provide a high quality of life for our citizens. We know that there are some basic things that we provide, roads, water, police and services, but many people love Cobb County because of our amenities and because of our services through public services, which are for you, our citizens. I don't want to go too deep into some comments, but I hear over and over again that we're giving funds to nonprofits. These are American Rescue Plan Act dollars that came for express one-time purposes, not general fund dollars. So we are not utilizing any of the dollars that we're discussing here today to give towards our nonprofits, nor do any of our recurring funds that we get in the county go to that purpose unless they come from the federal government. We do get community development block grant funds that come to the state and also come to the county as a pass-through to give to organizations that help to fill what I consider a safety net. You know, there's only so much that we can do as government. We don't do everything. They've helped fill in some of the gaps where we don't provide services to help make sure that Cobb County is a place where all can live. And by the grace of God, go all of us, that hopefully some of us never need some of those services, but there are a lot of us that do. And if we're able to help provide a little bit of support so that they can help a family a lot, I'm happy to be a conduit in providing that. There's also been some conversation about buses, but one of our speakers here tonight shared this in the last meeting, that buses are kind of like infrastructure. And you're right. And I've shared, you know, when I drive down an empty road, I've never complained and said, look at that empty asphalt. No car is driving down on it right now. It's there for access. Many people might not be on the bus 24/7, but it provides a means for somebody to get from point A to point B when it is needed. And we do have people who are dependent on that service in our county. A survey in 2017 provided 80% of our residents use it to get to school and get to work. These are hardworking people, like many of our speakers spoke to tonight, that that service is primarily used for people going to school and going to work. And I think when it comes to economic development and having a strong, robust county, that that is the kind of activity that we should, that I think we should support. And we're very fortunate that we get a lot of support through the federal government to help in how we provide those services. But imagine if people weren't getting to school and to work, what kind of challenges that we would have. Again, I think the dollar that we provide is, there's a public sentiment attached to it, and I have complete confidence in our staff and our commissioners with the decisions that they've made, not just in this budget year, but in past budget years, that they're doing their very best to serve Cobb County citizens in the best manner possible. So with that, Bill, I'm going to ask for you to please go into the next agenda item.
Very good, Chairwoman. Chairwoman, thank you. The next agenda item, we are requesting the Board of Commissioners adopt the FY25 budget and authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The vote passes 3-2 with Commissioners Burrow and Gamble in opposition. We will now go back to agenda item number five, Bill.
Very good. So Chairwoman, we are asking the Board of Commissioners to adopt the Board of Education's resolution establishing the 2024 countywide school tax for maintenance and operation of schools at 18.700 mils, countywide school tax for construction bonds at 0.00 mils, Marietta property annex 1995, I'm sorry, 1995 through 2004 at 0.00 mils as required by law, and authorize the chairwoman to execute the millage resolution for the Cobb County Board of Education.
So moved.
Second in discussion. Yes. So there's usually a lot of question around the millage related to the school, for the schools and our jurisdiction to be able to modify this or influence this, or what exactly we are voting on. And it was explained, I know, last year that we are voting on the ratification, which is ensuring that the school board follows the correct process, procedure in determining their millage rate and their budget, and that that is the scope of our oversight. We can't necessarily do anything beyond that component. And looking for confirmation that that is still true, consistent for the public's awareness on that, that this is actually formalized in the school board meeting when they take their vote on their millage rate.
Yes, Commissioner. The Board of Education has already voted on their millage rate, which was to hold it flat at 18.70 mils. This adoption and ratification is necessary to give the Board of Commissioners authorization to the Tax Commissioner's Office to conduct the necessary levies in accordance with the adopted Board of Education millage rates for the current year. So we are the taxing authority, so by approving this resolution, you are affirming that rate and allowing our Tax Commissioner to levy that rate.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, state law allows the school board to, their cap is 20 mils, and last year, they did reduce it from 19 to 18.8, I believe.
They went down from 18.9 to 18.7 and held flat.
Right.
At 18.7 this year.
Right.
Correct.
But it was last year that they did the .2 mils.
That is correct.
And we just, we, they, we have no control over their budget.
That is correct.
They have their own, the school board's their own separate entity. I know we get mixed up a lot of times with the public as far as what we can do and what they can do, but because our Tax Commissioner collects all the taxes, we have to approve them.
Yes.
Okay, are there any other comments? Call the question. The vote carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. With that, we're going to have to take a break so I can sign some of these documents so that they can get processed ASAP, and then we'll continue the rest of our hearing. Maybe we'll take about a 10-minute break. Thank you. All right. Thank you and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting this July 23rd, 2024. We are now at our Public Hearing tab and we have one matter that will be addressed by DOT. And I believe Jonathan Yee is here in place of our Director this evening.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman, Board of Commissioners and County Manager. Jonathan Yee, Deputy Director with the Department of Transportation. Our one public hearing is regarding advancing a few projects we have tonight. In accordance with state law, the county is required to conduct a public hearing prior to expending county funds of $100,000 or more to employ an independent consultant or consulting firm or to conduct an independent study or survey. In May of 2024, the Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution to apply for state, local maintenance and improvement grant program funding for eight transportation projects. These projects include improvements at seven intersections as well as the existing pedestrian bridge connecting Cumberland Mall and Cobb Galleria. This funding has now been received by the county and the department anticipates awarding engineering design contracts that could exceed $100,000 for each project. Therefore, the department recommends the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more for engineering design services for these eight local maintenance and improvement grant program projects. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being stated, we'll go ahead and open up our public hearing regarding the local maintenance improvement grant program projects. We'll take an unlimited number of speakers, up to three minutes per speaker. Okay, not seeing any speakers. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you. Appreciate you being here tonight, Jonathan. That takes us to our first public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comments, appropriate to review the related meeting rules, please state your name and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be slanderous. The Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should get of others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other's with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb Government. There is a timer on the podium to keep track of your time. Chairwoman, I think we may have not have all of our speakers here that originally signed up. If I can just kind of go through the list and if you're here, please move forward. Mr. McFarland. Ms. Hayden. French. Buxton. Slow. Partain.
Honorable County Commissioners, my name is Tamiya Partain. I'm a resident of Cobb County and a property owner and I stand by in front of you today to urgently address a pressing matter that has plagued our property for over five long years. A stormwater issue that poses a significant threat to not just our property but to the safety and well-being of my family. I come armed with years of research, extensive engagement with public records, consultations with experts and staff, and on-the-ground investigations. I possess an engineering background specializing in infrastructure, which has enabled me to thoroughly understand the complexities of the problem at hand. The issue was first reported by the previous property owner in August of 2011, a staggering 13 years ago. The area of concern falls squarely within a 30-foot combined sanitary and storm sewer easement that it is the responsibility of Cobb County to maintain. Visual evidence, including county videos, photos unequivocally shows obstructions, breaks in the pipe near the catch bracing, causing water to gush out uncontrollably and its wreaking havoc on my property. The repercussions of this negligence are dire. The relentless onslaught of water has led to a colossal sinkhole, damaging the structural integrity of my home with columns failing, concrete slabs cracking, and a retaining wall giving way. The continuous flooding of our basement only deteriorates our property but now also poses serious health risks due to mold and environmental hazards. Despite tireless efforts on our part, including countless pleas, meetings, proposed solutions designed by myself, the county's inaction still persists, leaving us in a perilous situation where the threat of structural collapse looms large with every rainfall. The gravity of the situation cannot be overstated. It is not just a property issue but a potential loss of life scenario that demands immediate attention. Moreover, the impact extends beyond us. The sinkhole now poses a threat to the county's sanitary sewer line, risking environmental contamination of the creek below and potentially incurring fines by the state if it fails from lack of support due to the sinkhole. The burden of proof has been laid as we have recently spent thousands of dollars to excavate and expose to the naked eye the root cause of the blockage, confirming unequivocally that this is negligence from failing to maintain the infrastructure. As responsible taxpayers, we have faithfully contributed to the county's funds, expecting just a basic level of stewardship in return. The current state of our property renders it practically worthless. I wouldn't be able to sell it if I wanted to because I would have to disclose the conditions to the new property owner. I implore you to consider the human costs of interaction, the looming danger, and the responsibility to act swiftly before tragedy strikes. I beseech you, not just as officials entrusted with governments but as fellow human beings, if you have any sense of moral decency, please rectify the situation without further delay.
Excuse me, we have a response?
Yes. Ms. Partain, our Risk Management Department and Legal are working on your claim. And I know we've corresponded, Judy Jones, our Director, Water Director is in the back of the room as well. So, thank you for coming tonight, but we are looking into it.
Okay. I just would like, we've been talking about it for five years. I need for it to move forward before I leave my house. That's all.
Okay. Well, you haven't been talking to me in five, for five years.
No, I've been talking about it with stormwater for five years.
Oh, okay.
No, you've been responsive every time that I've reached out to you.
Okay. So, I'll get with Legal and Risk this week and see where we are. But thank you.
Ms. Adams.
I'm still Alicia Adams and I just wanted to say from earlier comments that I don't know of anyone that was in the room tonight that opposes buses, that opposes transit. What we oppose is inefficient and ineffective transit. And we don't need to be spending any more money on it unless and until we fix the problem. Now, that doesn't mean we halt what we have. We don't expand it. We streamline it and we make it efficient and effective. It's just like our budgets for home. If we're spending a whole lot of money just running all around town and not being efficient and effective in our routes, what do we do? Mom usually comes to us and says, Junior, Juniorette, we got to tone this down. We've got to streamline everything. That's what needs to be done with this budget before we do any expansion, especially given that we're in a time of inflation. But also, instead of spending seven, eight million dollars on expanding the transit program, which we've already stated is inefficient and ineffective, why not address more the stormwater issues that have gone unaddressed, the deferred maintenance that has been needed for so very long? And instead, and you know, here's another thing, we're concerned about safety. Safety is paramount here in Cobb County and we know that there have been a number of deaths in the jails. It's happened before, but why isn't that our priority? Instead, we've got a horse and pony show. We've got, we've got two Hemi 3500 Dodge Ram trucks and trailers that each, each of those rigs costs at least 100 grand and that's based on analyses from other people that are in the industries. And I don't understand why we're not saying, oh, we've got to keep the people in our jails safer. Why are we not focusing on that? Instead, we're having a horse show. And that's not a besmirchment. I love horses, love them, but at the end of the day, we need manpower and the inordinate costs that we're spending on the horses because you have to train them, you have to train them every day. I've talked to some of the sheriff's deputies and the cost to board them is absolutely enormous. You could buy a Harley-Davidson every month for what we're, what we're spending and that would give us motor transportation. So, I'm just asking you to look at what's bloated and what's not in the most efficient and effective. We've got to do better and we can do it for each of us. Let's make it a win-win.
That's the final speaker.
That takes us to our consent agenda, the matters on consent. We're scrolling on the screen prior to this meeting and we'll scroll on the screen before the meeting concludes. Commissioners, we do have an item to add to our consent and I move that we add the following item to the end of our consent agenda and that is to authorize the settlement of Michael Graham versus Francisco Fajardo as presented in executive session on July 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised. I should have received pink slips. And to authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel and I believe we have a second.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, I oppose number 17.
Okay, and number 17 is for the overhaul of the Cobb Link Express bus fleet. Any other comments? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Moving on to the regular agenda and the first matter pertains to transportation.
Good evening once again, Chairwoman, Board of Commissioners, County Manager. Jonathan Yee, Deputy Director with the Department of Transportation. Our first item, which is Agenda Item Number 23, is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number B 2547, TO Number Three, to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with WSP USA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $206,873.66 for the Cumberland Transit Alternative Study. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes four one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you. Our second item tonight, which is Agenda Item Number 24, is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Bell South Telecommunications LLC, DBA AT&amp;T Georgia, in an amount not to exceed $211,472.4 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on James Road over Pine Creek, Project Number B 2103. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our third item tonight, which is Agenda Item Number 25, is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Road Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $363,608 for drainage system repairs on Foxhound Chase, Project Number B 2282. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our fourth item tonight, Agenda Item Number 26, is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Supplemental Agreement Number One to the contract with D&amp;H Construction Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $30,000 for water relocations on Schaefer Roadside Walk, Project Number B 2602. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our fifth item tonight is Agenda Item Number 27, is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two Final to the contract with CMES Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of $324,183.81 for West Atlanta Street Trail, State PI Number 16028, Cobb County Project Number X 2412. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Our sixth and last item for tonight, Agenda Item Number 28, is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Change Orders Final to contracts for various completed projects in the 2016 SPOSS Transportation Improvements Program Fund, 2022 SPOSS Transportation Improvements Program Fund, and Water System Fund, a total savings to these projects in the amount of Authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
We are now at our Public Services tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager.
Good evening.
We have three items for consideration this evening. Our first item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical Services to supply labor equipment and materials to replace athletic field lighting with LED sports field lighting fixtures and wiring on Field One and Field Five at Mud Creek Soccer Complex under the 2022 Park SPOSS Program. Fields Two, Three, and Four previously received LED lighting in 2018 and this work will complete the remaining two fields. These new fixtures use approximately half the electric These new fixtures use approximately half the electricity of existing fixtures and require less magnets and repair. We ask the BOC approve a contract with All-Star Lighting and Electrical in an amount not to exceed $309,969.87 under the 2022 Park SPOSS Program. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our second item is for the Board of Commissioners to ratify previous action by the county manager, authorizing emergency repair and replacement of the storefront doors and windows at the Civic Center. The building sustained major damage to the lobby in June 2024 during an automobile accident by someone in the public. We are currently working with risk management on any possible reimbursements to Cobb County through insurance. We ask the Board of Commissioners ratify action by the county manager for the emergency repair of the lobby storefront at the Civic Center in an amount not to exceed $116,455. Authorize a purchase order with Glassstream Incorporated, approve a fund balance appropriation within the general fund, and further authorize the procurement director or chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our last item is for the Board of Commissioners to ratify previous action by the county manager in approving Change Order Number 1 to the contract with United Pool Construction for improvements to the aquatic centers under the 2022 Park SPOSS Program, representing an addition to the contract in the amount of $90,000. The change order is for additional work in removing and disposing of the bulkhead and chip out of walls and stairs in the pool that was not included in the original scope. We ask the Board of Commissioners ratify action by the county manager in approving Change Order Number 1 to the contract with United Pool Construction under the 2022 Park SPOSS Program, representing an addition to the contract in the amount of $90,000. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve and a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, so I need a second.
Second.
Michael, are we still on schedule with when this will reopen with or without the bulkhead?
Yes, ma'am. It should reopen on October 1. We have not been told by the contractor that we have slowed down any that would affect the schedule. We think we're about four days behind due to the problems that we've had when we do order the new bulkhead, which there will be an agenda item coming back to y'all at the next Board of Commissioners meeting. When we order that bulkhead, it's probably gonna be about a three to four month process to purchase, get the bulkhead in and installed, which is probably gonna push us out to sometime in December. But we will be able to open Mountain View without a bulkhead. We'll at least be able to use it for swim. We just may not be able to run short course and long course meets, but we'll be able to swim in it through December until we put the bulkhead in.
Okay, so will you keep me updated? Because I, I'll put it in my newsletter as far as... They know it's closed now, but when we get closer to reopening?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
We are now at our second public comment.
We don't have anyone signed up for the second portion.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll begin our commissioner's public address and start with Commissioner Gamble.
Get ready for Battle of the Paddles 2024. This is gonna be our second annual Battle of the Paddles with a twist. We will be encouraging all of our departments to come up with teams, and we will then compete against each other. We will have more information forthcoming, but all of the funds raised will go for our senior services and to help Meals on Wheels. Thank you. Those are always great pictures.
All right, from the office, just a reminder for everybody, our Capstone internship, we are still taking applications. We're excited to announce that it's, you know, that this program's returning. We do it every year. It's a fantastic opportunity for students all around the county to gain hands-on experience and make a real impact in their community. We're offering 11 different programs to choose from, ensuring there's something for everyone. High school students and college students, don't miss out on this incredible opportunity to gain valuable experience. Applications will close on July 31st. So to learn more, please visit D2Cobb.com. From the community, applications for Cobb 101 close tomorrow. Learn more about the, about Cobb County Government and Cobb 101, the Citizens Government Academy. Apply now to enroll in the 11-week course offering an in-depth look at the many facets of county government. Sessions will be held at different government buildings, offering participants a firsthand look at how the county serves its residents. The class is limited to 32 Cobb residents or business owners who are at least 18 years old. Applications are available online through July 24th. The first class is August 8th. Please contact Cobb 101 at CobbCounty.org for more information. And the First Responder 5K Run/Walk, help those who run to help you at Cobb County's First Responder 5K on Saturday, August 17th at The Battery. Participants can walk, jog, or run, either in person or virtually. This family-friendly event for all fitness levels will include first responder vehicles and displays, field games with the Atlanta Braves mascot blooper, and a performance from the Braves Heavy Hitter Strum Line. This event is a qualifier for the Peachtree Road Race. You can visit runsignup.com for more information. It's a reminder of all of the ways that you can connect with our office if you wanna get involved, be engaged, offer up commentary, or just share your thoughts. And that concludes all of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Tom, and I'm looking at the clock. Calling all seniors, don't miss the Boot Scooting Event. Put on your party hat for a night of music, dancing, and Williamson Brothers BBQ with a live tribute to Dolly Parton performed by Katie Deal and a line dance performance. 7:00 PM, Friday, August 4th, at the Tim D. Lee Senior Center on Sandy Plains Road. Wear your best western wear. Proceeds benefit the Tim D. Lee Senior Center. Tickets are $30, and the deadline to purchase is Friday, August 2nd. You can visit CobbCounty.org/seniorservices to find more about, more information about it. Cobb County Police Public Safety will be celebrating our National Night Out. It's all about building a stronger, safer community by fostering connections between our community and Cobb County Public Safety. Let's come together for a night filled with fun, food, and festivities. Bring your family and meet your local public safety personnel and enjoy a night of unity and positivity. It will be six, from 6:00 to 9:00 at Jim Miller Park Event Center, 2245 Callaway Road, Southwest Marietta. For more information, go to CobbCounty.org/events/national-night-out-cobb-county. Oh, that's a mouthful. And due to the low levels of our lakes and ponds, we had to postpone two of our fishing rodeos. So the one for District 3 will be at Ebenezer Downs Park on October 19th, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., and it will be in conjunction with Fish with Your Commish. And last but not least, thank you to Bill Volkman and his staff and the county manager and everyone in the audience that participated in the budget hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. District 4 News and Updates. Join me and Planning Commissioner Michael Hughes for our July's In-the-Zone Community Meeting tomorrow, July 24th at 7:00 PM. Our monthly meetings are virtual and a great way to learn about recent zoning decisions and upcoming zoning applications in District 4. There are currently 12 applications to be heard in August. This month, we will be joined by the applicant for Z19, which is located on Hick Road and East West Connector. Please email rwanda.mccintosh@cobbcounty.org for the meeting link. As summer ends and the school year nears, two exciting events will help students prepare for success. On Saturday, July 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., the Powder Springs Community Task Force, Linked Up Church, and Empty Stocking Fund will host their 23rd Annual Back-to-School Bash at the Ron Anderson Recreation Center located at 3820 Macedonia Road in Powder Springs. This day, this day of fun and community spirit will feature a school supply giveaway, delicious food, a live DJ, exciting games, rides, and a variety of vendors. And then on Sunday, July 28th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., join the Riverside Epicenter for their back-to-school drive at 135 Riverside Parkway in Austell. The event will showcase cool cars, live music, tasty treats from local food trucks, and complimentary school supplies. And finally, the Cobb County Sheriff's Office is hosting a Citizens Academy from August 22nd through September 26th, from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. every Thursday. This program offers an excellent opportunity to learn about the duties, structure, and operations of the sheriff's office. Join them to gain a deeper understanding of how our sheriff's office serves and protects the community. Scan the QR code on your screen to register. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We close out, I want to thank our citizens for your active participation in our budget process today. Your voices do indeed matter, and we are committed to being transparent about our spending here in the county and to being accountable to providing you the best service possible. I also want to thank our commissioners for your thoughtful discussion this evening and for your engagement on this challenging budget. We may not all agree, but I respect each and every one of your perspectives and your commitment to our community's well-being. I also want to thank our staff, our budget office, for all of your work in preparing tonight's budget. We cannot do what we do without you, and we recognize your partnership in making Cobb the best that it can continually be. With that, I look forward to all of us working together so that we can make sure that our budget has a positive impact on our county and continues progress for our residents. Thank you, and have a good evening.